Supervisor Bredefield?
Here.
Supervisor Chavez?
Here.
Supervisor Maksik?
Here.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Here.
Chairman Mendez?
Here.
All here, thank you.
Okay, welcome to the December 9th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We will begin with the invocation and flag salute. The invocation will be led by District 5. After the invocation, remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here with us today is Pastor Anthony Flores. In 2011, pastors Anthony and Mandy Flores founded Adventure Church with a shared vision to reach and disciple the next generation. Pastor Anthony has served in full-time ministry for the past 25 years in a variety of roles: youth pastor, college pastor, internship director, and as a valued member of executive pastoral leadership teams. A graduate of the Central Valley School of Ministry, Anthony carries a strong evangelistic gift and is deeply passionate about leading people to Jesus and helping them grow into mature followers of Christ. Outside the pulpit, his favorite things in life all start with F: faith, family, food, football, and friends. A former high school football player himself, he also coached at the high school level for five years. He and his wife Mandy have been married 17 years and are the proud parents of three beautiful miracle children. Pastor Flores and I have known each other for over 20 years. He used to be my lifting partner in the gym, but I stopped lifting with him because he's way stronger than me. So please rise and pastor, the floor is yours.
So kind. Thank you Supervisor Maksik and thank you supervisors for having me. If we wouldn't mind just close our eyes, bow our heads. I'm gonna pray a few scriptures. Father, I thank you for the opportunity to gather. Lord, knowing that we need your wisdom, for your Bible says that we are to trust in you with all of our heart, all of our soul, all of our strength, and you will direct our paths. Lord, in moments like these and seasons like these, you tell us to not lean on our wisdom, but by the wisdom and the counsel of you, the Almighty. Lord, I thank you that what you required of us according to Micah 6:8 is to act justly, love mercy, and to walk humbly before you. I pray then for all those in authority today, all those who will be sharing today that we'd have one mind, one accord, one heart, one unity, all, Father, that we might be able to proclaim on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, so for any of us who may lack wisdom in a certain particular area, may you give it liberally today that we might do the right thing and steward your people in the right way. I ask all of this in Jesus' name, amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you so much.
Agendas are in the back table for anyone wanting to follow along. Madam?
Item number one, approve agenda. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, item 11 is deleted from your agenda.
Make a motion?
Have a motion and second, all in favor is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number two, approve consent agenda, item numbers 31 to 91. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there was a revision to item 48 that was distributed to the board. It included the words "and housing deposit" have been deleted from the second recommended action of that item. And then item 88 has been deleted and will return at a date uncertain.
Okay. Who needs to pull anything off? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I've got four items I need to pull to come into compliance with the Levine Act: item 55, 60, 74, and 77.
And for the same reason, I need to recuse myself from item number 74.
Okay.
And Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself for the same reason on item 74.
Okay. So we'll hear that one right after the fluff and you'll do the draw straws.
We'll hear it after item five if that's okay with your board.
Yes. Is there anyone in the public that wants to pull anything else off the consent agenda? Hearing none?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries. Turn this over to Supervisor Bredefield.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite a special leader to the podium, Mr. Ning Chu Wang, son of the late General Wang Pow. Ning Chu has continued his father's legacy with tremendous dignity, strengthening partnerships between the Mong community and leaders throughout Fresno County. His commitment to preserving heritage and uplifting future generations is admirable. I'd also like to invite a former USD FSA State Director, Council Member Blong Zhang, who's here to join us at the front. Blong has been a steadfast advocate for the Mong community and has worked closely with all of us to support today's recognition. And finally, I want to welcome the representatives of the six Mong family associations receiving certificates today. Will the families of Wang, Zhang, Lor, Yang, Tao, and Vu please come forward so we may honor your service and contributions together? Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming Mr. Ning Chu Wang. And Mr. Wang, do you have a few words or Mr. Zhang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and all of the Board of Supervisors. It's an honor for me to be here and also thank you very much for your recognition.
Any word, Blong?
Thank you Supervisor Bredefield for helping the community. Obviously, these folks work volunteer, you know, for the community in guiding and providing work and especially the family leaders here. They do a tremendous amount of work and to recognize their effort like this means a great deal. But also, you know, Uncle Ning Chu, he is the designated family representative for the general and so he's been working, carrying that legacy and carrying that torch for the community for such a long time. This is just a little effort on our behalf to recognize that effort that has been going on for our community for a long time. And thank you so much for the Board of Supervisors for recognizing that effort and that opportunity here. It means a great deal to the community.
Great, thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item before we bring it back to the board? Apparently not. Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor, so am I saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, please come up.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
John, Colin, sit down. There you go.
You're perfect.
We now move to item number four. Under Supervisor Maksik, adopt resolution recognizing the Department of Human Resources for receiving the 2020 National Association of Government Defined Contribution Administrators Arc Cable President's Award.
All right, and we have some members from HR here today and Hollis, of course, will lead the way. But before Hollis begins, this recognition that we have today for her team is pretty significant, so I want to put some things in context. So this resolution talks about how in 2016, Fresno County had about 37% participation rate in our 457 plan, which is our defined contribution plan. Well, today, as of about mid-year, we've got a 69% participation rate. And again, to put all this in perspective, right now through Nationwide, Nationwide is our manager of our 457 plan and some of our other defined contribution plans. The county of Fresno is approaching a half a billion dollars invested with Nationwide. There are 3,069 counties across the entire United States and Nationwide participates with the National Association of Counties. And when you take a look at all the counties that are a part of NACO, they make up about $30 billion of investments with Nationwide. We represent a half a billion dollars alone as one county. That is significant. The benefits of investing in defined contribution plans pay dividends in retirement and especially now where we have a retirement plan here, which is very generous, a pension, which is very generous. People who are post-PEPRA do not receive as great a benefit, but by investing in 457 plans and 401A plans and other vehicles that the county of Fresno has designed for its employees, it allows for people to retire very comfortably as long as they start contributing early on in their careers. So I just want to congratulate Hollis, her team, pensions, and defined contribution plans I get very excited about, but I'm gonna turn it over to Hollis now to share a few words with us.
Good morning, board, thank you so much. This really was an honor, but I have to be honest that really the driving force behind this is David Joseph, so I'm gonna just go ahead and turn it over to him because without him, we would not be where we are.
That's too kind. But good morning, Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors, David Joseph, Human Resources Program Manager. NAGDA is the leading professional organization for government-defined contribution plans and the Arc Cable President's Award is their most prestigious award. The county winning the President's Award is a culmination of the effort and resources dedicated to the deferred compensation plan by human resources staff, the Deferred Compensation Management Council, our Nationwide partners, and current and past board members. This is a great honor and we should all be very proud of our contributions. Thank you very much.
Any public comment on this item? I'm gonna bring it back to the board. Go ahead, Paul.
I just want to say how proud I am.
Of this team. Back in 26, many years ago, I used to do what David's doing and all I'm gonna say is the participation rate was very low when I was there. As soon as I left and David took over, it skyrocketed. But really, the whole team, you know, David, Davon, and all of you, so proud. This is a big deal and your dedication, but also your board's leadership in having a match that goes with our deferred compensation plans for tier four and tier five. That was a big part of this, so everybody's been part of it. But I just wanted to add my words, I'm so proud of this team. And I've been to this conference, this is a very competitive, very prestigious award. So on my behalf, congratulations.
With that, I'll move for approval.
Okay, you got a motion? Second, all in favor is going to say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries, go ahead and come up.
We now move to item number five. Under Supervisor Pacheco and Supervisor Chavez, adopt resolution recognizing November as Family Caregivers Month in the county of Fresno.
Okay, you got the resolution, so I'm gonna hand it over to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my privilege and pleasure today to help sponsor this resolution for in-home supportive care providers that play a vital role in supporting seniors and people with disabilities in Fresno County, ensuring that they can live with dignity and independence in the comfort and safety of their own homes. Within Fresno County, there's over 21,000 dedicated IHSS providers who deliver compassionate, high-quality care to low-income residents, saving taxpayers millions of dollars each year compared to the cost of publicly funded institutions. I'm proud to sponsor this with my colleague Supervisor Chavez. I have great respect for the dignity and the hard work that they provide the most vulnerable in our community. Supervisor Chavez?
Thank you Supervisor Pacheco. I want to thank our in-home support workers for the work that you guys do every single day. I think this last government shutdown showed us how vulnerable our populations are and from talking to you, I know a lot of you actually turned into social workers and helping folks get food at the food bank and doing a lot of things that oftentimes is not necessarily in the job description, but I know you do it with your heart, I know you do with compassion, with empathy, and I just wanted to publicly thank you, tell you that Fresno County thanks you and me as a supervisor thanks you and our community thanks you for the work that you do. So thank you very much. With that, Mr. Supervisor Pacheco, you want to make a motion?
I'd make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Maybe.
Want to have our representatives come up and speak?
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Silvia Carrillo. Mi primer pronombre es ella y soy orgullosa de trabajar para IHS en Fresno.
Good morning, my name is Sylvia. I am a proud Fresno IHSS worker. I know I speak for all of my Fresno SEIU 2015 siblings when I say this, it is an honor to be here and honored to be accepting this proclamation. I like to think that this event marks something particularly significant for Fresno IHSS, the moment when we begin truly working hard hand in hand with our Board of Supervisors to create the future of care that Fresno so desperately needs. This is what we've wanted all along, a Board of Supervisors who are willing to see us as partners in fixing the care crisis in Fresno. And rest assured, folks, we all know that there is a lot of work that needs to be done regarding care in Fresno. But today isn't about going on and on about crises we've all been dealing with for years. Today is a day to celebrate and remind the world that this is what it looks like when caregivers and public officials are able to celebrate one another. This board's commitment to Fresno's future of care was shown earlier this year when, after two years of bargaining, we managed to win a contract that not only puts Fresno caregivers on the path to livable wages, but one that gives us health care. Next year, the real work begins. No one knows what 2026 is going to hold, but with the strong contract to help us, we, the caregivers of Fresno County, will remain ready to help create a sustainable care of care.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead and make a motion? You made a motion.
I second it.
We have one more.
One more speaker?
Yeah, go ahead.
One more speaker?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'll start. You'll be the last speaker, and then we'll have you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Andre Laws. I am hereby request, in my own words, to reflect what I have experienced as a caregiver and new union member of SEIU 2015. I have experienced help, hope, and love. Love is a necessity. You thoughtful men, who are honoring us today, I would consider to be the collectors of our tears, the recorders of our cries for help, the responders to our pleas for understanding, patience, and consistent support. In one word, I am grateful. I will forever be grateful for the necessary support that I needed to take care of my mother before she passed. She was in a nursing home for over four years, stage three kidney failure, incontinent with dementia. Every three months, I was informed about how to accept her passing away. Every day, I told her I would get her out. Then I heard about IHSS. I quit my job. With the sort of, with the support of my wife and IHSS, I was able to give my mother what every mother should have, someone to take care of them in their time of need and vulnerability. The staff of Heinz Hospice and many others said the love and care provided for my mother with the help of in-home supportive services extended her life another three years. She passed with dignity and respect peacefully in a place oh so familiar. Without the constant beeping in the nursing hallways, without the conversations of strangers confusing her, without the cries of others suffering in their time of need, without the cold meals that sit in the hallways of the understaffed nursing homes. I thank all of you who have supported in-home supportive services in part and wholeheartedly. May you all continue to experience a clean conscience and the peace of mind that comes with the loving support that you give IHSS and SEIU 2015. Thank you.
Okay, you got a motion and a second.
Can I just say a word?
What's that?
Could I just say a?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just also wanted to thank all of the IHSS workers for all the work that you do. It's critical work. It's important work. It's hard work. So we thank you for that, and I also want to commend our Board for the contract negotiations and the success that we did, because I think it was important for us to demonstrate that we do support you, and this Board does, and keep up the important, critical work you do. Thank you.
Okay. You got a motion and a second? All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, why don't you guys come up and take pictures?
When we fight?
We win!
When we fight?
We win!
Se puede?
Si se puede!
Se puede?
Si se puede!
Se puede?
Si se puede!
You guys all get in, I'll take the pictures. Go.
Gloria, go, 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 go. Come on, go.
If you wouldn't tell him to come back right here, he could probably get everybody in.
And I'll get a picture if you want to.
All right, cuando luchamos?
Ganamos!
One more. Oh, come on, a pelea, run, run! All right, ahora! Si se puede?
Si se puede!
Si se pudo!
Sí, hoy se puede!
Okay, did you want to do, let's do 74 first.
74 first.
That way, if Nathan has to stay, he can stay, do that, and then he's the only one affected on the other ones.
Yep. Good idea.
74. Accept termination letter from Prestissi Ambulance Services Incorporated for Dispatch Services Revenue Agreement 23-328, effective November 15, 2025. I will come along with the draw.
I'll go first, if you guys want.
Okay. And the winner is?
Bingo.
Okay.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Joe Prado with Department of Public Health, and Dan Lynch, Emergency Medical Services Director, is present if you have any questions on item 74.
Any questions from the Board? Hearing none, do I have a motion? I'll second it. All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, yeah, bring them back.
And we'll go in order of starting with item 55. Item number 55, under Behavioral Health, pulled by Supervisor Maxick due to the Levine Act. Approve and authorize Chairman to execute Amendment Number Two to Agreement Number 22-267 with RH Community Builders LP.
Good morning, Susan Hall, Behavioral Health Director. Happy to answer any questions on item 55.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, yeah, bring them back.
And we'll go in order of starting with item 55. Act.
Approve and authorize Chairman to execute Participation Agreement with San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority for the purpose of participating in the SJVIA Health Insurance Pharmacy Program, Dental Insurance and Vision Insurance for Employees and Retirees effective January 1, 2026 through December 31, 2026.
Nobody left.
Can I make a motion to approve the item?
Yeah, is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll accept your motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Item 77, pulled by Supervisor Maxick due to the Levine Act. Make a finding in accordance with Public Contract Code, Section 3400, Article 4, preference for materials in order to match other products in use at Fresno County main detention facility. Specific components for lighting and built-in furniture may be designated by specific brand or trade named for project.
Okay, you're on.
Good morning. Jenica Gettard, Senior Staff Analyst with Public Works and Planning, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this item.
Like to make a motion to approve?
Second. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor, so we're saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Somebody want to go get Nathan?
That concludes all the items that were pulled from this morning. We return to the regular agenda. Item number six, under Supervisor Bretafeld, Supervisor Pacheco, and Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator, conduct first hearing to add Chapter 10.80, Prevention of Contribution for Overconcentration of Sex Offenders in Single-Family Dwelling Utilized as Documented Transitional Living Facilities to Title 10 of the Ordinance Code of Fresno County, waive reading of the ordinance in its entirety, and set the second hearing for January 6, 2026. Designate County Council of Superior Fair an adequate summary of the proposed ordinance and direct the Clerk of the Board to post and publish the required summary in accordance with Government Code, Section 25124B1.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board. Samantha Buck, Deputy CIO. The item before your Board is a first hearing to establish a limit of the number of sex offenders to reside within a single residence to no more than six. The proposed ordinance aims to prevent the overconcentration of these offenders in a single location, thereby reducing supervision and monitoring challenges for law enforcement, protecting public safety and welfare, and ensuring adequate supervision within transitional living facilities. The ordinance will prohibit owners, property owners, from knowingly allowing more than six sex offenders to occupy or reside in a single-family dwelling unless they are legally related by blood, marriage, or adoption. Violations of this ordinance are classified as misdemeanors punishable by fines up to $1,000, imprisonment in county jail for up to six months. Now, enforcement will be through administrative citations of $10,000 for the first violation, $20,000 for the second occurrence within one year, and then $50,000 for a third occurrence or subsequent occurrence within another year. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll turn this over to Supervisor Bretafeld and Pacheco for discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much, Sam. I want to thank Supervisor Pacheco and Sheriff Johnsononi, and frankly, all of the law enforcement personnel that have to continue to get the calls dealing with the problems at these facilities. I want to make it clear that the number of six being the limit that you can have in a single-family dwelling home of these sex offenders is not the county's law, it's state law, which frankly is unfortunate, and I hope that changes, because it is my opinion that the sex offenders should not be in residential neighborhoods. They belong in prison and shouldn't be leaving prison. Certainly, the pedophiles, who never change, they don't change. Our communities should be free of those folks and not have to worry about them reoffending, which sadly, they often do. My district has several of these transitional facilities, as does several members on this Board. We have all kinds of calls for service. We had in August a shooting at one of these facilities, and it obviously makes the neighborhoods unsafe, and it's a situation where our law enforcement have to deal with this going on all the time. I don't know if Sheriff Sonori wants to address that when we continue with this discussion, but it's an ongoing issue. We have now enacted some inordinance that will address some of this, these problems. I've been told that they have violated the limit of six that is required by the state numerous times, and should that occur, there will be penalties from $10,000 to $20,000 to $50,000, as well as subject to misdemeanor of six months in jail. We're not messing around. I intend to make sure our neighborhoods are safe, and they are not impacted by, unfortunately, the laws that are imposed upon us by the state, which makes our communities unsafe. This ordinance does that, and we intend to enforce it and bring accountability to these operators and owners who are causing these problems in our community. With that, I'd like to pass it to Supervisor Pacheco.
Thank you, Supervisor Bretafeld, and again, appreciate all your efforts on this. This happened to me a couple of years ago. I received a call from a concerned resident of District One that said, "How would you let this home come in across the street from me and not give me any notice, not have any hearings, or any type of public notice?" When we did our research, we found out that these homes are strictly sanctioned by the state of California. They're not required to give any notice to the local jurisdictions, and that's where I have heartache with that. I think when these homes are coming in, we should be given some sort of notice and have our residents to be aware that this is coming in so that they can take appropriate action and simply have their guard up. The way current state law is, that's not allowed. I appreciate all the work Supervisor Bretafeld has done on this. We will parallel state law that is required. However, if they violate that law, we now are giving the sheriff some tools that they can provide appropriate penalties to comply with the law. And again, if the sheriff is going to comment on anything, now would probably be a good time.
Good morning, Chairman Mendez, Members of the Board. I want to thank Supervisors Pacheco and Bretafeld for bringing this forward, for putting some teeth in the law into improving the quality of living in Fresno County and improving public safety in Fresno County. This is an ordinance that will give us tools to do our job, but also it will make our neighborhoods safer, and like Supervisor Pacheco said, we are going to comply with state law, and you're not going to have six sex offenders living in one home and six in another home. I mean, you can have that under this, but you won't have 16 people in each house, you won't have 32 people living on a block. And I think there does need to be some notification of local county government or city government, because in the past, these homes are popping up, and like Supervisor Pacheco said, people call him, they call me, I go to community meetings, they want to know how this happened, and it's the law. And so now, we will have some teeth in the law, we'll be able to kind of tamp down, and you will not have an oversaturation of sex offenders within residential neighborhoods where people live and raise their families.
Okay. I got a question, Sheriff. What state agency actually is supposed to regulate this and permit it in the first place?
Well, I don't believe there is any regulation from any state agencies, from what I've been told. This is our state of California trying to integrate people back into our society, which I understand that component of it, their sober living home, their transitional living homes. But because of that, all they, it allows them to go into residential neighborhoods, and the bigger the house, the more people they can put in there, and this is obviously a for-profit business, and I'm not here to tamp down on anybody trying to make money. But it does cause issues, as we've seen in some of our neighborhoods, and it becomes very difficult when you have to live next door to these individuals, and you don't want your kids to ride their bike down the street or play in the front yard. It's really not acceptable, when you think about what we're trying to accomplish here, for people to have great places to raise their kids, go to work, and their kids to go to school here in Fresno County.
Yeah. So I kind of thought that, that so the state passed a law that says you can have them, and there's supposed to be six people in them, correct?
No more than six.
No more than six.
No more than six. But who's going to regulate it, and now we can issue a fine?
All right.
Like, we know that we're serious, so, you know, if you do three violations within one year, you could be six months in jail and fined $50,000.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody understands, it's one of those famous state programs that nobody regulates, so we have to regulate it. Correct?
That is correct, and now with this ordinance, we will be able to regulate it.
And I would add that I believe the law that used to require notification was struck down in 2015, and these folks could not be by schools and now, and churches, and now that law was struck down in 2015, so these dirtbags frankly can be in our neighborhoods, and so we have to protect our people as best we can with our hands tied behind our back because of the legislation that comes out of Sacramento. So that's what we're doing here today.
And that is correct, and if you look at the law, some of it states 2,000 feet from a school, and so that's less than half mile. So they can be right down the street from a school, and we can't really do anything to stop them unless they have a certain condition of their probation or parole that requires them to be like a mile away or something like that, but if they're in the home, they're there.
Okay, any other? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank my colleagues Supervisor Bretafeld and Pacheco for bringing this forward. Supervisor Bretafeld, as you know, I've dealt with this in my district as a council member, and thank our sheriff for his work. I, you know, I got a couple of emails from folks that said, "Well, if they don't go here, where are they going to go?" I don't care, I don't care where they go. They shouldn't be around children, and I can tell you that as a foster parent that has taken these children into my home, the level of trauma and pain and long-term mental anguish that this causes to me is just unfathomable to have a child go through that. The one thing that does stick out, I think it's 25% of these individuals will reoffend again within the first couple of years. So if you line up four people, at least one of them's going to reoffend again within a specified time. Eight of those folks, two of those, to me, that is not even acceptable, and I understand The one thing that does stick out, I think it's 25% of these individuals will reoffend again within the first couple of years. So if you line up four people, at least one of them's going to reoffend again within a specified time. Eight of those folks, two of those, to me, that is not even acceptable, and I understand the limitations of state law, but there's a time and place for these individuals, and so I'm genuinely appreciative of the work that you both did and our sheriff for doing this. I'm 100% supportive of this. The one question that I do have is with regards to the operation of these homes, what are the safety protocols that they have for making sure that these individuals are not just roaming around in the neighborhood? Are there any kind of provisions that are outlined in what that, you know, business model looks like, or is it just strictly a residential unit where they're free to go at any time?
Correct. It's a residential unit, and the program you're talking about is called the Conditional Release Program, and that's managed through the Department of State Hospitals. They contract that, the oversight of these individuals, out to a contractor called Liberty Healthcare, and so they're the ones that oversee these individuals.
And do we know how much money these businesses are getting on a monthly basis from the state to reimburse them?
No, we do not.
We do not?
No.
And I think you hit the nail on the head. This has turned into a money-making venture for individuals that are doing that by putting the lives and well-being of kids and families in danger. I mean, there's just no doubt about that. So 100% supportive. I do want to know what those protocols are. We don't necessarily have to include any of that now, but I do want to know what this process is, whether we work with the state in some form or fashion and outlining that and making sure that, you know, children are safe to walk to school in the mornings at certain times. I think the minimum we can do is set up some kind of parameters around that.
Well, I think some of these supervisors, some of these folks, if not all of them, are on probation and have probation requirements, because I know our chief of probation is actively involved with these kinds of situations because these are people who are released from prison on probation and have requirements as a result of that probation.
I think we need to look at that, have some kind of provision in there to safeguard our folks there in those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Okay. Nathan, you have any? Okay. I'm going to ask for a public comment on this item, item six.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. My name's Dawn Coyle, and I'm the co-founder of Centers for Living, which is a nonprofit. Oh, sorry. My name is Dawn Coyle, and I'm the co-founder of Centers for Living, which is a nonprofit. For the past seven years, my husband and I have operated a highly structured reentry and supportive housing program in Fresno County for men and women displaced by homelessness, addiction, incarceration, disability, and mental health challenges. Many of the individuals we have served have nowhere else to go. Over seven years, Centers for Living has housed over 1,200 men and women across Fresno County. Within that population, we have served over 260 individuals required to register under Penal Code 290, both men and women, in full compliance and cooperation with the state and county requirements. This work is not casual or unstructured. It's intentional, regulated, and centered on public safety and stability. Today, we operate six men's homes and one woman home. Our model is designed around accountability and stability, year analysis testing every three days, daily breathalizing testing, a minimum of two live-in house managers on each property 24/7, structured supervised environments, ongoing coordination with parole and probation. Out of the 260 individuals required to register under Penal Code 290 served in seven years, there has been one reoffense, which was addressed immediately and appropriately with authorities. We operate as a private pay model, charging $625 per month, which comes out to about $20 a day. Many residents cannot consistently afford that amount, and we have never turned someone away solely due to finances. Uniquely, our clients opt in to stay with us and actually pay their own way. We have only one requirement for someone to stay with us, and that's the willingness to change. There have been inaccurate statements made about our organization that I would like to clarify. Centers for Living has no payroll. My husband and I are unpaid. We have 18 house managers, and they're all volunteers, individuals who are giving back after rebuilding their own lives. My husband and I actually personally live on the property above the garage on one of the Gettysburg properties. This is not a distant oversight. This is a daily, hands-on responsibility in the same neighborhoods where we live. We recognize and concern sometimes, we recognize that concerns sometimes arise when housing like ours are located in visible or high-profile neighborhoods. However, stable supervised housing reduces risks, it does not increase it. In Fresno, shelter capacity is shrinking while homelessness continues to rise. When structured housing is removed, the alternative is displacement and instability, not safety. We are concerned about the uneven enforcement and heightened parole activity.
Okay, go ahead and finish.
Thank you.
Real quick.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We're concerned about the uneven enforcement and heightened parole activity directly solely at our Two-Fit Garden homes, while other properties have not experienced that same scrutiny. We welcome oversight, but it is, it must be fair, consistent, and evidence-based. These homes have not created problems, they have prevented them. We're not asking for special treatment, only that decisions be grounded in facts, outcomes, and equal application of standards. Thank you for your time and consideration.
And I'm John Coyle. My wife and I run Centers for Living, and I want to begin by clarifying something that's very essential. This entire uproar over the last few months did not arise of any violation on our part. In seven years of operating our housing, 1,200 adults, we have never received a single violation, occupancy, parole, or zoning violation. We did not cause this issue, nor did our residents. Yet, some of the authors of this ordinance are responding to the opinions of a very small number of emotionally charged neighbors instead of facts. It has been stated publicly that we house more than six registrants in a single home, absolutely false. Never have we had more than six registered offenders living in any of our homes. And when elected officials speak inaccurately like this without the research, the public gets misled. And here's the facts, Fresno County has 1,600 registered offenders living in our county, and most of them are homeless. We are the only, the only nonprofit that has ever housed registered offenders and supported them. We've said yes to supporting this group, and it's working simply because it's supervised. And let's look at the actual fact about, from prison authorities, not opinion. 65% of people from prison reoffend, that's a fact, when they're released within two years. But the registered offenders under Penal Code 290 reoffend at under 10%, not 25%. And the 25% you're referring to are technical reoffenses because they fail to register and follow through with their reporting requirements, not because they commit the crime again. And that's the biggest fallacy in the public. Housing, it says, the point is, research is absolutely clear, without a doubt, stable and supervised housing reduces risk, homelessness increases it. This ordinance causes homelessness and eliminates the accountability that we provide. So if this ordinance pushed forward, it was pushed forward in a moment of panic, it would displace 120 people, forcing them into homelessness in a county already struggling to house those that are on the streets. Next door, the city of Fresno is working to solve a 1,500-person housing shortage, yet this ordinance would instantly add to that crisis by sending individuals back into the streets. So I ask this council, knowing that, doesn't this issue deserve more careful research and thoughtful response? This is a knee-jerk response without the proper details in front of the people making the decisions. And Supervisor Bretafeld, I need to address you directly. Dawn and I live in your district. We house 120 people, and you nor anyone from your office has ever visited our homes or sat down with us to understand what we do. Other elected officials have, many, quite a bit, as a matter of fact. And genuinely, I invite you today to come and have dinner with us at our homes and see firsthand the lives that are changed. We're not asking you to ignore concerns, we're asking you to lead with wisdom, accuracy, and due diligence. The board's being asked to make a major decision based on fear rather than facts and without adequate time to research. So for these reasons, we just respectfully request the board to postpone this ordinance until complete research is conducted.
Thank you.
With a full and legal input. Thanks, guys.
Either, if, does anybody want to speak after him? Okay, you're the last speaker.
Thank you. My name's Peter Capitan. I'm directly affected. I live in the neighborhood, and I want to make sure that you understand, this isn't a NIMBY argument of someone who lives in the neighborhood. There should be reasonable limits on these houses, and I'm not going to comment on Mr. Coyle and his so-called ministry. You can do your own research and make your own opinions. But I can tell you that, for me, it's not a problem, because I grew up on East Street. My mom went to Edison, my aunt went to Edison, my boys went to Edison. I've lived in gritty neighborhoods. That's not the issue. The issue is there is no supervision at these homes, and there are kids in the neighborhoods. I personally have witnessed sex acts being done outside the house. I've witnessed and called on numerous, and I can't even count how many, narcotic sales. I'm a criminal defense attorney, I know what a narcotic sale looks like. When you got guys walking down the block, cars driving up, they hand something and money's handed back, and then they walk back to the house. I've witnessed stolen property being taken into the houses. Nobody rides a bike with another bike being pulled alongside. I've witnessed their supervision of these guys walking through the neighborhood, catcalling at various women. I've personally seen that. I finally quit calling because it got so ridiculous. The sheriff has done a wonderful job, they're on top of it, but their hands are tied, as Supervisor Bretafeld has said. I finally called when they put a trailer on the house and had two little girls living in that trailer. If they've never had over six sex offenders, this shouldn't be a problem for them, then they're complying. But I can tell you, they've got two houses side by side, and I've gone on Megan's website, and I've seen a lot more than six sex offenders living there. You've got two little girls in a trailer, and that was the final straw for me. That's when I had to call the sheriff for the last time and say, "Hey, you guys got to do something, this is not safe." I don't care what community you're in, I don't care if you're on the south side of Fresno, on the north side of Fresno, you've got to have reasonable controls over these houses. It's not fair to the community, whatever community it is, I don't care what district it's in. Your people should be safe, and there should be reasonable controls over these houses, and I would urge you guys to pass this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bring it back to the board.
Yes. First of all, I think it's very important when people sling bullshit to call bullshit, and I think, Mr. Coyle, you sling a lot of bullshit, and I think you just heard it from a resident who heard about your accountability and your oversight. I've heard from numerous people who pass by there and see all kinds of things. I've talked with our law enforcement, the calls for service are the calls for service, the data is the data, and there's numerous calls for service. You have not overseen that there are only six people in your facilities, that the law enforcement officers have come in there, and there have been many times more than six. So that's a bunch of crap, and what you sling is a bunch of crap. As for housing and these poor homeless pedophiles and sex offenders, I have a solution for the homeless crisis for them. They belong in prison, there's a home for them there, they belong in jail. Unfortunately, we live in a state that has weakened every criminal law, so these people are now in neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods, rather than in the prisons where they really belong. So I don't want to have dinner with you, thank you for the invitation, I'm not interested. I'm interested in protecting the neighborhoods. You have a business for profit, you have to live with what you do, that's fine, no problem for me. I have a job to do, which is to make the neighborhood safe. You're making them unsafe, we're making them more safe, and we will continue to work with law enforcement and probation and the people that are on parole to make sure that what Mr. Capitan outlined does not continue to happen.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add too, you know, as an individual, I have no issue with the homeless or the mental health, and this board has spent many, many resources to try and improve that and take care of those people. I do have an issue with sex offenders living in neighborhoods, and again, I agree with Mr. Capitan. If these providers of this service, if they're truly following the law, this is not an issue. It's not an issue. But if they're not, we're going to give the sheriff the resources that he needs to keep our neighborhood safe, and for me, and I believe the majority of this board in its entirety, keeping our neighborhood safe has always been our number-one priority, and this just simply reinforces that and gives the sheriff and all of his officers, the deputies, the tools that they need, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Got anything else? No, unlike, I'll have to agree with you, I mean, if you're following the law, this ordinance shouldn't bother you. It shouldn't bother you. So I'll take a, do you guys want to make?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
We now move to item number seven, Administrator Maxick in Public Health conducts second hearing and adopt the proposed ordinance amending the Fresno County Ordinance Code Title 10, Public Peace Morals and Welfare by adding Chapter 10.72, regulating prohibiting the sale and distribution of kratom in certain forms and to minors and unincorporated areas of Fresno County to a person under 21 years of age to be effective 30 days from approval and waiving of the ordinance in its entirety.
Mr. Chairman, just, this typically would be on consent, but we made some modifications at the last meeting to bring it back, and we put it on the public portion, just so if anybody had any questions, they can ask them, but I'll leave my presentation very short.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item, item seven?
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Laredo, it's good to be back with you again. I'm here again on behalf of the American Kratom Association and the consumers for whom we advocate. Last month, I urged you to rely on science and evidence to craft kratom-related regulation, and today, I'm here to thank you and to support your current proposed ordinance amendment and to offer our help should you need it. In November, I said that we all want to preserve public safety and to stop bad actors from harming our communities. We feel that the best way to do so is to target the actual problem, concentrated synthetic 7OH products, not natural leaf kratom, and we talked a lot about that last month, you talked a lot about that last month. And with this revamped ordinance, this is exactly what you've done. You've recognized that natural leaf kratom and concentrated synthetic 7OH are not the same thing. You've heeded the well-considered warnings from the FDA and others regarding concentrated synthetic 7OH products. You've listened to your constituents regarding their need for access to natural leaf kratom products, and specifically, you've expressly delineated that in Section 10.72.030, clarifying continued adult access. You've protected children by instituting age and packaging restrictions, and you've appropriately joined other jurisdictions around the state by taking a science-based approach to public health policy and also preserving adult consumer choice. So my message is clear, thank you very much for choosing to protect your constituents by keeping safe natural leaf kratom products available. Strict limitations on 7OH and age restrictions are the right way to regulate, and we applaud your efforts, and seriously, if there's something that my clients can do to help with this, we would be eager to do so. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll move for approval of this second reading.
Okay, you got a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor, so I say an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carried.
We now move to item number eight, an administrative office confirm appointment of Dr. Trinidad Solis to the position, Solis to the position of county health officer pursuant to Fresno County Charter, Section 16, effective December 9, 2025.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, your chief operating officer. I'm pleased to bring or recommend to your boards for confirmation the appointment of Dr. Trinidad Solis as a county health officer effective today and in accordance with Fresno County Charter, Section 16. Dr. Solis has served the Department of Public Health with distinction since she joined that team in 2020 as an extra help public health physician and eventually promoting to deputy health officer, demonstrating exceptional leadership and public health expertise. Since she's also been involved in some very instrumental programs, including the award-winning Rural Mobile Health Program, and has been recognized and earned recognition from state and federal organizations, and even by your board, which honored her in 2023 for receiving the National Hispanic Medical Association's Physician of the Year Award. Confirming her appointment will ensure continued full-time medical leadership, enhance the operational efficiency of the department, and support the county's strategic public health priorities. And at this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Paul for some comments.
Thank you, Ed. I just wanted to share a few words that, are not my words, that describe, others have said about Dr. Solis, a powerful voice, someone who is shaping the future of healthcare, amazing, brilliant. Many people have said many positive things, Dr. Solis, and just can't recommend you highly enough, so just wanted to share that.
Good morning, board. As someone that was born and raised in Fresno County, it's an honor for me to serve the community that helped shape me. I look forward to working with our partners. I look forward to working with our partners to increase access to healthcare, including addressing the shortage of healthcare providers in our region. I also aim to reduce the prevalence of chronic diseases such as diabetes and high blood pressure that are preventable and are leading causes of death among residents here in Fresno County. And these are, you know, there are a variety of health issues that I plan to work with our partners to address going forward. So thank you for this opportunity to serve the community.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to thank you. I had a chance to meet with Dr. Solis and we had a great conversation about expanding access to health services here, not just in our urban areas, but in our rural communities as well. And thank you for sharing your story about growing up in Selma. I'll forgive you for being a bear as a roof rider, but welcome to Fresno. Congratulations, Dr. Solis.
Also during COVID, we had the opportunity to work together a little bit. Really appreciate all that you bring to the county and I think you're a fantastic pick for the permanent position. So welcome aboard and I look forward to working with you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add, I had the privilege of working with Dr. Solis during the COVID experience and her and our new director, Joe Prado, were instrumental in bringing the vaccine to our essential workforce. And the hardworking people of Mendota were the first in the state to receive the vaccine of our essential workforce. And that model was later used throughout the state to vaccinate all the people that provide food and fiber for us. She was an instrumental part of that. She's a reasonable person and brings a great deal of compassion and knowledge to that. And I'm wholeheartedly in support of her appointment today.
Yeah, I had the pleasure of meeting with you yesterday and you have an impressive resume, great background, great experience, and look forward to you doing great things in Fresno County.
I had the same experience as Brian back in the COVID debacle. And your professionalism was unbelievable in what you did to set things up, you know, not only in Mendota, at Terranova. We did a, I can't remember, we did, I think we vaccinated over 1,000 people there, I think. It was a pretty big deal, you know? And even the deal we did in Five Points. So, and the fact that you're a farm worker's daughter? So you know your clients. So anyway, I fully support you. I think you're just a great person and a great representative for Fresno County and I think you'll do great in this job.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask for any public comment. Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor, so I say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Welcome aboard fully. What's that? Come up and take a picture.
I'd like to invite my husband, Mark Parvenian, to join. We now move to item number nine. An administrative office receive verbal update from the general manager of Fresno County Rural Transit Agency.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce Moses Stites, who's been the general manager of the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency, overseeing its expansion, fleet electrification, and also the new Selma operations. In the short time that we've known each other, he's also been a big help to me and he's going to give us a brief update and also some transition that many of us are aware of. Moses.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nerland. Moses Stites, general manager, Fresno County Rural Transit Agency. And I just want to go over a couple of things with you. I know you have a heavy agenda and have had some big issues before you, but I'd like to let you know that I'm very pleased to be here to provide you, one, a recap of Fresno County Rural Transit Agency. We operate in the 13 incorporated cities excluding the city of Fresno and Clovis, although we do come into those two cities with some fixed routes. But we operate in the unincorporated communities as well. And we transport approximately 600 to 800 rural residents daily. We have in those 13 individual cities, anywhere from one to four vehicles on a demand-response basis. And that's important to note because anyone who lives there can call an 800 number and receive service probably within 15 to 20, 30 minutes, depending on how many people are on the waitlist or the manifest. They typically go to the senior centers, they go to the health clinics, and they go to get their pharmaceutical needs met, legal ones anyway. And we also transport college students. We have four college routes. Without these routes in the rural areas, we would not have a lot of the young individuals going to the west, or Kalinka College now, it used to be West Hills, and also Reedley College. And these routes are made possible through the different funding sources that FCRTA manages. Obviously, we get federal funding, 5311 operating assistance, we get Transportation Development Act funding. We also get a large amount of money from Measure C. And that's how we're able to offer free fares, if you will. I hate to use the word free because they are subsidized, but for seniors, disabled, and veterans. And we do that for the incorporated cities. And we've done that for a number of years. And it really makes it possible for a lot of seniors who, one, are on fixed income, as you know, social security. Some of these seniors are up in the years and their social security benefits are not that great, maybe $400, $600 a month. But they have to make do with utility payments, rent, and other essentials for essential services. So I just wanted to share this with you because it's been a really great experience for me, having come from Caltrans and the Public Utilities Commission to come in and provide these services and oversee them with FCRTA. And I've dealt with many of you on many occasions, along with the complaints and residents, which you're very diligent on in contacting me. And I just hope that the follow-up has been there. And I want to continue to work with you. But I want to share a couple of stories with you and I think this is what resonates with me. We had a veteran who was a patient of Veterans Administration at Clinton and Fresno Street. And this veteran, Vietnam era, lived in Tremor Springs area. And the VA could not transport him into Fresno for his oncologist visits because the oncologist on site had a clinic outside of the VA. So he had to resort to private transportation. That private transportation would have been about $140 a one-way trip for his treatments, which were going to be for the next six to eight weeks. We were able to transport him, $5 each way for his trip. Typically, we don't do those type of medical transportation, school bus, and charter services. But we made an exception and I figured it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. And that's just one example of the type of services that people derive from this public transportation. So anyway, I just wanted to share that story with you. You're more than welcome to visit our new facility in Selma, which we just recently constructed with the help of, again, Measure C and also state and federal funding that we were able to use. And I would like to introduce my successor, as this is my last month with FCRTA after 14 years. And I want to introduce Janelle Del Campo. She's the operations, or deputy director, former operations manager. And she will be taken on the reins after January 1. And I'm hoping to succeed my ongoing career with FC TA after tomorrow. And I want to introduce Janelle Del Campo. And I think she will serve you well as a public servant. And again, she's been with us for eight years, so I think she knows the ins and outs. And so.
She want to come up and introduce yourself?
Good morning, board. Janelle Del Campo. I've been with Fresno County Rural Transit Agency for eight years and look forward to serving you and the community as the new general manager for FCRT. Thank you.
Okay, you got big shoes to fill. Not that he has big feet, but.
And following, speaking of footsteps, following in the footsteps of Steve White, your public works director, I just want to provide these to you as a token of my appreciation for your dedication to the rural communities, both the incorporated and the unincorporated. And just a token of our appreciation to each and every one of you. Essentially, it's our logo that has three vans on it, buses, and it shows the established date, 1979. And we're going on almost 50 years of service to rural residents that without this public service, they would not be able to come in.
Thank you. Any comments? Go ahead.
Moses, I've had the pleasure of working with you for nearly 30 years. And with your retirement, you will definitely be missed, but you've earned it. And I just wanted to say that I've appreciated your advocacy, not only for transportation, but also Fresno EOC, your advocacy there, just for helping those in disadvantaged communities. So you've lived and left an incredible legacy. So thank you for all that you've done. You'll be missed.
Thank you.
Moses, I would just say Supervisor Mendez's work closes with you over the years. But anytime I've ever had any interaction with you, you always conducted yourself in a professional manner. You're an even-kill person and I have enjoyed working with you over my decade of service here at the county.
Thank you.
I think that one of the biggest things, always I've known you for 11 years now, is you can be a little bit like me and just be blunt, honest about something.
I'll take that as a compliment, Supervisor.
I mean, you get the real answer when you ask Moses a question, you know? And I've always really appreciated that. And hopefully, the board of the Transportation Authority will decide to keep you on permanently. And I think you would be a great, do a great job there. I mean, you have the number one qualification. You speak Caltrans, so.
Thank you, Supervisor.
Well, thank you very much and glad to have you aboard.
And I'd like to come forward.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
One of these to you. And you can put them up in your garage, your office, wherever you'd like, just a small token. One last thing, too, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank legal counsel. We're assigned attorneys from the county and we've had the pleasure of having Brian Rome assigned to us most recently, he still is, and also Allison has filled in. So just want to express my appreciation for them and their professionalism and the advice that they give their client. So thank you very much.
We now move to item number 10. Under the administrative office in public health, I'm sorry, public works and planning, receive presentations from staff regarding Measure C renewal and potential citizen-led initiatives and provide direction to staff as necessary. I did, we just received a handout for this item and I will be passing it out.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. For the purposes of getting right to it, I'm going to hand it over to Public Works and Planning to get right to the presentation.
You don't want to sit down here?
I can.
Yeah. You can too, Steve.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning. It's not your fault. We're technically challenged in this room.
Design Division Manager, the Public Works and Planning Department. So this morning, I'd like to give an update on the Measure C. I'd like to provide an update on the Measure C renewal effort and also the allocation plan that the transportation team developed. And receive any? This is not your first time. And receive any direction that your board may have regarding these matters. So as you may recall, on November 6, there was an allocation plan that was introduced to the steering committee and the policy board approved that plan on November 20. However, on November 18, a group of regional transportation professionals introduced an alternative plan that allocates a higher percentage to local roads and regional roads and reduces the allocation for public transportation. So for comparison, in this slide, you can see what the proposed allocation plan from the transportation team is compared to the steering committee proposal. And we have also included the allocation plan, the failed ballot measure in '22 had, and also the current measure. So the transportation team proposal for the local roads, streets and roads is 70%. And for the regional roads, it's about 15%. And 11% for transit. But the steering committee proposal allocates 65%. The current measure has a 75/25 formula. So, I assume if we use a 75/25 formula, how much additional funding county would be receiving, basically, compared to the approved steering committee proposal? So, in this scenario, we see county is getting about $1.373 million just in the first year. And, you know, based on this allocation, you can see that, you know, other agencies would get a small reduction, but county would be receiving, because of the higher road miles that the county has, county would be receiving a higher allocation. So, what is the fiscal impact if the measure doesn't pass? Currently, we're getting about $10 million from Measure C, so if Measure C doesn't pass, we would get a reduction of $10 million immediately. There is also, you know, a fiscal impact due to Measure C funding for local transit services. So, if you don't get Measure C allocation for transit, then our TDA claim has to compensate for that loss of revenue, so we would potentially have to fund that, and there is an impact to our road fund. So, some of the upcoming meetings, on December 4th, the steering committee met to approve the implementation guidelines that was developed recently. There were some comments made by local jurisdictions and some stakeholders, and those comments, some of them were tabled, they were not approved, so the steering committee did not approve the draft implementation guidelines. You know, they postponed that to this Thursday, December 11th. We just received the final draft guidelines from COG, and I haven't had a chance to look at it, but some of the revisions, you know, impact our operations, and I mentioned that in the last meeting at the steering committee, but we have to see what comes out of this upcoming meeting. TTC and PAC will look at that final guidelines this Friday in the meeting, and then if they are approved, it will go to the COG Policy Board on December 18th. Our CAO provided some comments regarding the draft guideline to COG. Some of these comments were made to the final guideline. For instance, the revision to the county set aside annual allocation for disadvantaged communities is changed from $5 million to 7%, basically. There was a comment made that that is not adequate. That comment was made by one of the steering committee members, but I just noticed that that 7% stayed in the final draft, in the final guideline. There are some provisions in the final guideline that really make us, you know, implemented challenging. One of the provisions is regarding having bike lanes on basically all major arterials, you know, all the collector roads, every project, basically, that the county uses Measure C in whole or in partial funding needs to have bike lanes. That is contrary to what our ATP plan shows. We cannot really afford to put bike lanes on every project that we work on using Measure C. So, that is not a reasonable request. There is also a request of, you know, putting Class 1 trails and Class 4 bike lanes on quite a few miles in the rural areas. County, City of Fridley and City of Sanger are required to meet that goal, and again, meeting it would be a challenge for the county. So, as far as this renewal ballot, the process, you know, once it's approved by COG Policy Board, it will go to the city councils and then your Board for approval, and it will go to the FCTA Board finally, and if all these Boards approve it, then it will make it to the ballot. It would require a two-thirds supermajority for it to pass, and the citizen initiative that the transportation team has put together would require a lesser percentage to pass. It does require 22,000 signatures to be placed on the ballot and your Board approval, so if that is decided to be placed on the ballot, then we may end up with two different measures, one requiring 50% approval, the other one requiring two-thirds majority. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer.
Can you explain the regional?
The regional, the way the-
I don't know if people quite understand some of this stuff.
So, those are usually Caltrans-type projects and county projects that have major corridor, you know, type projects. We did academy projects. I remember when I joined the county in 2002, that was one of the projects I worked on, and then we did the Mountain View projects, and the frying project was partly funded by Measure C. So, those are the type of county-regional projects, but in the last measure, there was an expenditure plan that decided which projects this regional money or regional pot is supposed to be allocated for. So, they had different tiers of projects, Tier 1 and Tier 2. All the Tier 1s were funded, but the Tier 2s were not funded. With this implementation guideline, because of the shortage of funds, there's only 4%. The goal is to have regional projects, basically, you know, get approved competitively, so Caltrans and county would be competing for the small allocation.
Right. And a regional would be, even in the city, would be a major interchange fix?
That's right.
Right.
Caltrans-type projects.
Like Shaw Avenue, for instance, that's a $30 million-plus project, right?
That's right. I mean, probably by the time they-
So, there's no way enough money to-
There is not.
Yeah, yeah. And then on the implementation guidelines, I know they're not approved, but what they're proposing really handcuffs the counties and some of the cities on what they can do, correct?
I feel that way, you know? I mean, obviously, the steering committee has a different opinion, but there are some language in there that I feel is not very clear, you know, and there are inconsistencies, let's put it that way, or ambiguities that need to be cleared up, but, you know, I spoke with Robert Phipps, and he was saying that there is going to be a strategic guideline once the measure is passed, and maybe those will be cleared up in the strategic guidelines later on.
So, can you repeat that again?
A strategic guideline, I guess, how these specific projects or goals are supposed to be met, so-
You're saying that's not in the ballot language?
No, this is going to be done after the ballot and once the measure is approved.
Yeah. So, they wouldn't even, that's kind of like hiding the ball there.
It's not. You know, I mean, one of the questions I had is, for instance, they're asking the county to put a 7% allocation for disadvantaged communities. Well, what does that 7% include? You know, is that just our contract construction cost, or that's the total project cost?
Yeah.
It's not very clear in that.
Right. You have anything to add with that, Steve?
Remember that the way we do projects is different than most agencies do them. We'll have a contract awarded through Board Action, then we'll have staff time, consultant time going on to it. So, what we use is the total project costs, inclusive of all construction management, design services and the like. So, some of the clarification, if we could get the clarification, we think we can find some workarounds to help our disadvantaged communities that exist in our county, but we don't know that, and that's what we're trying to represent to the Board today. The challenge is, the project is a project is a project. The disadvantaged communities need more than just roads and sidewalks and the like, they need all kinds of other infrastructure. Well, Measure C won't be able to pay for that.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Got a quick question. The last three slides that you had, you think it's two separate processes. One is a process approved by the Board of Supervisors, and maybe Steve, your team's not, maybe we could have our county clerk, Mr. James Kuss, just for the benefit of the public, talk about the timelines for what that would, for what that would look like. When is our absolute last date that we could technically vote on this and put it on the ballot? And then also, if you could give a overview on the signature gathering process and what those timelines would look like.
Good morning, everyone. James Kuss, Fresno County Clerk, registrar of voters. Wasn't expecting, but I think it's real important to get a little information out there upon these processes. For a measure to be placed on the November ballot, a jurisdiction must provide, must submit that measure to my office by August 7th of next year. This Board has a meeting July 14th prior to that, or July 12th before that. That's the only scheduled meeting prior to that date. So, that should be the date that anyone looking to bring a measure for Measure C or bringing a citizens' initiative should have all the processes completed and to this Board for you to submit that to my office to be on that ballot. So, it's very important to kind of get those, we're not talking November, we're talking July is the target point there. A citizens' initiative should be started at least 13 months prior to the target election date. For November of next year, that would have been October 1st of this year. It is absolutely possible for a citizens' initiative, a county-wide citizens' initiative, to be done faster than 13 months, but we do have initial startup processes that will take about 30 days. You must give notice of intent, you must publish that notice, you must get permission from my office for the, your petition to be circulated before you start that circulation. You have up to six months to circulate that petition. For this timeframe, we're already cutting that down. My office has from 40 to 120 days to review the signatures on those petitions. The closer a petition is to the minimum number, which as you saw on the slides earlier, is basically 22,000 valid signatures, the longer that review takes. If you have significantly more, I would be recommending right now over 34,000 as a target for petition gathering. We can actually do a faster review because we only need to do a random sample rather than a full review of every signature.
Right, because the total is, what, 20?
21,909.
Yeah, you have to have 21,000 valid signatures.
Correct.
Right.
And if we have to check every single signature to find that out, it takes us longer, and that's where that 120-day period that the law allows us to do. We are not, this is not going to be the only thing that potentially could be on the ballot for that period. We have four propositions that will be coming to our office as well, so that means that we aren't going to be able to turn around a petition in a few days. There's going to be competition for resources, so anyone looking to do a petition needs to be reaching out, needs to be accessing the information we have available on our website right now. We have a county-wide initiative handbook available on my website right now under the forms and handbook section, and you should be talking to legal representation that has knowledge about the initiative process so that you are ready to do this, because it needs to be done pretty quick.
Yeah, thank you, county clerk, and that's what I wanted, for the benefit of the public, to kind of paint that picture.
You have to have all the paperwork for it up by what date?
That July meeting is the current target point. August 7th is the legal deadline for any measure to be given to my office by resolution from a jurisdiction. This Board does not have a regularly scheduled meeting in August prior to that date, so that July date is where-
Would have to be approved on that day.
Correct.
But, Mr. Chair, that's for the one that this Board would potentially vote on, right?
Yeah, the public.
The public.
The supermajority.
But for the signature gathering, what is the absolute last date for the signature gathering?
It actually applies both ways. This Board must give me that initiative. I actually would come to this Board and say that sufficient signatures had been gathered and that it is satisfied, and you would then, by resolution, give it back to me to put it on the ballot, and so that July date is still the target date, whether it be a measure coming through the current regular process as described here or a citizens' initiative.
So, Mr. Kuss, I believe that's where the confusion arises. It was our understanding, I believe, maybe the perception of the public, that if a citizens' initiative comes through, then it would bypass the Board and automatically go to you.
So, the Board for a citizens' initiative would not have a vote on the initiative itself. It is all about the signatures on the petition. So, if there are sufficient valid signatures, that 21,909, then your job becomes ministerial to pass it to me. There are a few steps in there, but that the Board does not have a yes/no on whether this goes forward to the electorate.
What if the Board chooses not to vote ministerially to move it to you?
That is a question for legal counsel, not for my office.
Legal counsel?
Yeah.
I didn't mean to throw a monkey wrench into this conversation, I just want us all to be on the same page.
Yeah, no, that's true. Because I didn't, I thought it was bypassing us. I didn't know the initiative was going to come through us. I thought once they did initiative, it directly goes to the clerk and it bypasses this Board. So, what would happen in that, that we don't vote technically on it, we simply vote to move it along? What if the Board chooses to not, what if there's a majority of the Board that chooses not to move it along? Then what?
Somebody could go to court and get a court order to force us to do it.
Yeah.
Well, they do bypass it.
Yeah, because-
We're still in the process, but it would be involuntary.
It's ceremonial.
Yeah, but on a supermajority public measure, we have to pass it.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. That's different.
It's ministerial, means they met what the law requires.
You're talking about a 50%.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, correct?
50 plus 1.
Right.
Right. But on a 66-
Yeah, it has to come to us.
Public measure, we still have to, we have to prove it two times.
Yeah, we still have to prove putting it on the ballot. Right, yeah.
Yeah, this Board does have an opportunity to ask for a report regarding any initiative coming in about the economic impacts on the county, but that's a 30-day window that gets added to that, to the process.
Well, hopefully, we can work it all out and avoid that, because that would really be an ugly mess if got to go to court. Yeah, that would not be good.
Well, you're just kind of wasting your time then. Go ahead, Nathan.
I've got some questions about Exhibit A that we have in our packet, which shows, I believe, the current percentage breakdown under the existing Measure C, and then the 27 to 57, if the proposal passes, it shows, it gives a breakdown in percentages. Are you following what I'm talking about? Do you guys have that in front of you? So, with that, I think right now, existing neighborhood roads currently- Yes.
Yeah. That's different.
It's, it's ministerial, means they, they met the, what the law requires.
You're talking about a 50%.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, correct?
Fifty plus one.
Right.
Right. But on a 66.
Yeah, it has to come to us.
Public measure, we still have to, we have to approve it two times.
Yeah, we still have to approve putting it on the ballot. Right, yeah.
Yeah, that, this board does have an opportunity to ask for a report regarding any initiative coming in about the economic impacts on the county, but that's a 30-day window that gets added to that, to the process.
Well, hopefully we can work it all out and avoid that because that would really be an ugly mess if got to go to court. Yeah, that would not be good.
Well, you're just kind of wasting your time.
Yeah.
Then, go ahead, Nathan.
I've got some questions about Exhibit A that we have in our packet, which shows, I believe, the current percentage breakdown under the existing Measure C. And then the 27 to 57, if the proposal passes, it shows, it gives a breakdown in percentages. Are you following what I'm talking about? Do you guys have that in front of you? So with that, I think right now, existing neighborhood roads currently receive about 35% of Measure C funds. With what's being proposed, it would go to 65%, correct? Am I reading that correct?
That's the steering committee's proposal.
Yes, correct, steering committee's proposal. And then, so just to follow along what Buddy had to say about regional projects and how critical they are, I know that currently with the existing Measure C, we've got over 36% of Measure C dedicated to regional projects. And I think our packet itself talked about some of those regional projects which were delivered over the course of the last 20 years. I think 180 East was one of them. I don't know if, was the 269 Bridge Project, that was, I think, also a tier one project? But I think when you go and you look at all the different projects where cities benefit from these regional projects, it's not just, oh, the, only the county gets benefit because people travel between city to city. There are a number of different projects. I know that 180 West, all the way out to I-5, has been something that's been talked about going all the way back to the first Measure C. But I think what I heard you say is our existing Measure C, it's a tier two project. We didn't, didn't have adequate funding to take 180 all the way back out to, to I-5. Is that correct?
I'm not sure if the 180 West is a tier two or tier one, but there's just not enough money in Measure C to even deliver all tier.
We can.
I know.
Just save that, I might have Mike Leonardo get up because he's kind of the expert on the last initiative.
So I also see increases for public transportation, which I have no issues with public transportation per se, but when I look at the percentage increase, it goes up by, you know, nearly 6%, which with an extension of Measure C, that's significant dollars. Does ridership justify the increase in spending for public transportation?
Well, I can't speak for transit services, but from what I have gathered, no. I mean, the ridership does not support this, but still there is demand for expansion. You know, some of the rural communities, they want extra services, additional services, you know, even fax, they want their, their service areas to be expanded. So there is more demand in, in terms of, you know, what the public wants, but the ridership doesn't support.
One thing too, it seems like with what's being proposed, at least tentatively right now, with the next iteration of Measure C, if it moves forward, I think that cities will receive about 120% increase where the county receives a 90% increase because there was a change in methodology over how funds are allocated based upon population and roads. I think our current allocation is 7525. They want to move it to 80% population, 20% roads. And so, and then also with transit, with this focus on increasing revenues for transit, that further kind of disadvantages the county, where I'm kind of hard pressed a little bit. We can't, as we look at this, we have to think of ourselves as a collective Fresno County with 15 cities in it. And from my standpoint, being an outsider looking in, I almost feel like a lot of the other players who've been involved in setting up the methodology has pitted, it's like county versus cities, and I, I personally haven't appreciated that. That's just been my, my opinion. The, the formula, whatever formula is landed on, really needs to take a look at regional projects because everybody benefits from the regional projects. I appreciate the discretionary spending on existing roads. And I know that the state of California right now doesn't want to add capacity to roadways. However, we need to take a look at existing roadways that we do have and make sure that they don't go from four lanes to two lanes and then back to four lanes because that is not a workable road. And, and so for us, I think we need to take a little bit, a more holistic approach to the regional side and our approach to regional projects. I would like to see a lot more funding in that pot.
So the analogy I'll give is a three-legged stool. Without any of the legs on the stool, it's going to collapse. Local roads, city roads, and regional. To get around in this county, you use our roads, you use the city roads, and you get on the freeways, the expressways, and the like. So really, it's important for this board to understand that you've got to have all three legs there. I think that's what the, the alternative to the steering committee's proposals going to bring forward or has brought forward, and that's in the matter in the data here. Now, there are sheets in the back associated with the presentation, if you want them at the door.
You know, one of, one of the issues we have as an agency for capacity increasing project is there is no federal funding for capacity increasing projects. So Measure C was our only source of funding for those type of projects, and county has quite a few projects that is required for, for expansion. Unfortunately, the way the guidelines are set up, they are only allocating 5% of all the Measure C allocated or dedicated to capacity increasing projects. And also they're putting a condition that every agency that wants to do a capacity increasing, every single road in that agency must have a PCI of 65 or higher, which is not reasonable. There is no way, even with all the funding in Measure C, the agencies can increase every single road to a PCI of 65 or higher. So, so that is basically inhibits, you know, doing any kind of capacity increasing project in the county.
Yeah, capacity is a four-letter word.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. You know, one other thing, the original measure didn't have any money for transit. That's correct, isn't it? And then the second one, the second, the measure we're on now, the transit money was taken off the top. So they were a category in themselves.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you guys have any more questions? I'm going to see if Tony and Mike want to come up and they can answer any other questions that. Mike ran the Transportation Authority and Tony was, ran COG for how many years?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity to address the board this morning. The, the comments that I heard, I think, are spot on with the regional program and we, that, that's really, it's a term that really doesn't convey what it is. And, and a lot of people think, well, regional, that's somebody else. But as, as been pointed out, it really, it connects the whole county together, all the cities with the major urban area. The, and what it really is, it's congestion relief, eliminate bottlenecks, and improve safety on county roads, city roads, major, you know, that serve more than one jurisdiction and the state highway system. And if you look at the polling that COG did, that was like the number two priority that people had was to, to address those things. So, I mean, this plan, it's one of the, the serious concerns we have is only 4% is going to those critical areas that polled only below fixing roads. The other thing to know about that is we have historically been able to leverage Measure C dollars, $8. Within the regional program, we get $8 for every dollar we spend. Now, there's no guarantee that would continue in the future, but that's the 40-year trend that we have looking behind us. So, you know, it's not just cutting it 4% of the, of the measure money, it's a loss of that potential matching. And I mean, by my rough calculation, that's about a $5 billion loss to this, to this county by not being able to leverage other people's fundings through our Measure C program in the, within the regional program. And if you compare that to transit, I mean, transit was much, you had to get to the third page of the polling before people started to, to support transit. It's an important aspect for our community. I don't mean to say that it isn't. But at the proposed funding level, which I would argue is actually 29%, because there's a 4% innovative category in the COG plan, and if you read the implementing guidelines, that's all transit oriented. So really, it's going from the 19 and a half in the current measure up to 29% when you include those together at the expense of a regional program. Is there any other questions you'd like me to address?
So along those lines, something else too, in your background, you used to be the District Six Director for Caltrans as well. So to my question about how important it is to finish some of these roadways and projects where there's bottlenecks, I mean, looking at it strictly from a, from a standard of just congestion, it improves air quality when you're able to move vehicles better. So can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we kind of went through this in 2022. I, I think that everybody acknowledges that the freeway building era is done. The system is there, but it's not complete. There, there are parts of the, both the urban freeway system and the rural expressway system and the county arterial system that still need to be addressed, and that's what they focus on. They're not really focusing on increasing capacity, they're focusing on trying to manage the traffic that's there better, to where you avoid congestion, you, you eliminate these bottlenecks. And that is where you go from an idling vehicle to a vehicle at speed, which has a much less impact on air quality. So you're, you're absolutely correct.
Is any other questions for Mike?
No.
Well, I think I'm, I'm pretty good too.
The other thing, if I could add, about 95% of the trips in Fresno County occur on the road system, so a combination of local roads and the regional roads, 95% and dedicating 4% of the money to it versus transit, which is about 2% of the trips in Fresno County, getting nearly 30% of the money. So I think that all modes have to be supported, but the, the plan at COG just seems to go too heavy towards transit and way too light on the regional system.
Now, I, I do got a question. On 180 West, there's still money in, in the, in that, the second transportation deal?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. So 180 West was a tier one project, so it is eligible for funding in the current measure. The problem is, last time Caltrans updated the cost, it was somewhere between 300 and $400 million to complete that linkage all the way out to Interstate 5. There is less than 100 million, when I left, there was less than 100 million in the Measure C regional program in order to apply to that. So it wasn't a lack of desire, will, or eligibility. That project was eligible, but there simply was not enough money to do it. When I was there, and then I think even after I left, there were negotiations with the West Side Cities about, okay, how do we serve the West Side with the 100 million that we have? And I think there were projects identified on 33 between Mendota and Fireball, and then from Kermin to Mendota that could still provide improved transportation for those communities shy of doing the, the entire 180 West extension. The other option would be is that, okay, you saved the 100 million in the current measure, and provided you have a regional program that, that is sufficient, you could fund it in this Measure C 3. So if that was the priority, then you could take care of it through Measure C 3. And I think in 2022, we had that listed as one of the regional projects that was eligible.
Right, but the money's still there.
Correct.
If the West Side mayors can decide how they want to spend it.
Well, within, yeah, I mean, it needs to be to the, to the, to the goal of the regional program.
Yeah.
But yes, it, we were working, and I, I know current staff continues to work with the, the east, the West Side Cities on what's the best way to spend that money.
Okay, no more questions for Mike? Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tony. I want to ask Robert Phipps to come up. I got a question. You know, this has been going on for a while, and there's been secret negotiations with the city of Fresno, later on, the city of Clovis, and transportation for none. And how come the county was not involved in those?
Thank you Supervisor Robert Phipps, Executive Director with Fresno Council of Governments. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. To answer your question, the, the county has registered its opinion in comments. There was early involvement on, on behalf of the county that was withdrawn at a certain point over Brown Act concerns. That was made very plainly clear. And so, you know, negotiations did continue with the facilitation team that did go Brown Act. And so those negotiations have continued without the county, that is true. I think it's fair to say that it has been relatively city centric. That's, that would be a, a fair comment. You know, certainly our perspective at Fresno COG from a staff, you know, position is, we, you know, we don't like what's going on with this in terms of, we, we, we look at it from a very regional perspective and would love to have an agreement. You know, we're, we're getting ready to sit down at the Christmas table and the family is fighting, and we don't like it when mom and dad are fighting. And so we would really appreciate the opportunity to, to come together and have a, have an agreement on this.
You got anything to say about that?
Yeah, I, I think that ship has sailed. Mom and dad fighting, that started long ago. And, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't even know, it's, I've said the same thing over and over. When you allow people who have an agenda to get people out of their cars, and that's the real agenda, that people don't use their cars, everybody goes to public transportation or rides a bike. When you have people whose focus is about climate change and of these kinds of things rather than fixing people's streets and roads, which is what they really want, they're not interested in bike lanes. Not many people ride public transportation, yet 25% is committed to public transportation. They've taken money away from regional projects. The county was excluded, county residents will be impacted. And I think the thing they forgot is that this has to be approved by this board of supervisors, and I suspect it's not going to be. And so the, the people that were let in in the steering committee, you put 12 people, unfortunately, the mayors, most of the mayors, not all the mayors, allowed the process to be hijacked by a bunch of radicals. And I've dealt with these radicals, they're radicals. And so we are left here with a expenditure plan that hurts county residents, doesn't fix streets as it needs to be fixed. The, the amount of money that needs to be committed, the city of Fresno has over 1.2 billion, the county has over $1 billion in deferred maintenance for streets and roads. This will not fix, fix that problem, yet we can fix the problem if the money is committed to it. And I want to support a Measure C, we need a Measure C, but I'm not going to allow this to be hijacked, I'm not going to support it. And then I've said before, I represent Northwest Fresno, Northeast Fresno, and Clovis. Those people voted this down, yet the radicals that were allowed to be part of this could care less, and I can assure you, they're going to vote it down again. And I'm going to help them vote it down if this is the process, if this is what comes before the voters to vote on, I'm going to make sure this fails. Because I'm not going to be a part of a process where people continue for decades, be told their streets and roads are going to be fixed, and they're not. They're not going to be fixed. So if you didn't want mom and dad to fight, maybe Mr. Phipps should have been, been speaking up a little bit more because I didn't see much speaking up about, about this. And, but again, I don't put it on you, I put it on the mayors that are there that allowed the process to be hijacked, and they bent the knee to the people who killed the, the Measure C in 2022. So it's a, a real shit show at this point. It has been for some time. It will end up being a shit show, and here we are. So we'll see where it goes. It'll probably be people filing their own measures, we'll see. But it's a, a problem, and the people have not been served frankly by the, some of the mayors at COG, and certainly weren't served when they allowed the radicals to get in the process. Those mayors and the representative from the county should have decided how this expenditure plan were elected to do that, and they punted away out of fear to these people. And now we're left with where we are. So we'll see how it all ends up.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I do want to point out that under the, under the proposal at COG, the county does stand to gain, by our estimate, over half a billion dollars more under this measure than what is currently being allocated under the 2006 plan, the measure that we're currently under. And I'd also like to point out that our understanding of the current measure is that you have 24% actually that's dedicated to transit. So the, the 19%, 19.6% that's referenced refers to the amount that goes directly to the transit agencies under the current measure. There's additional funding that is set aside for transit, other transit programs or transit related programs such as TOD, Transit Oriented Development, Senior Script, Carpool Vanpool, Ag Vanpools, those kinds of things that when combined amount to 24%. So the, in, in this case, the 25% that is dedicated entirely to the transit agencies is, all of those other programs are collapsed under, under that one program. So it's a, it's a net increase of 1%. There is a provision for additional zero or low-cost fares under the access and improvement category that opens up once that is funded, that is true. But there, there is, the, the county does receive considerable additional funding for street and road maintenance under the proposal. I, I appreciate the opportunity.
I kind of like Nathan's numbers a little better because there's always. Because there's always, always remember the comment, there's liars, damn liars, and there's statisticians.
Got it.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just a couple of closing thoughts. Mr. Phipps, I had the opportunity to go and be the alternate for one day. And I had a chance to see, as my colleague described it, I wouldn't describe it a shit show. I think it's a lot of people trying to get to a point where not everybody's getting their way. I don't think anybody wants to close the door to negotiations. I think both sides have now outlined in the, they're lining the sand. I think, I think there's opportunity for us to try to get to that space, that happy medium. But if we don't, then I think that's one of the reasons why I wanted a county clerk to outline what that process would look like for everybody doing their own thing. And then we really have mom and dad going through divorce court. And, you know, the voters deciding at the end of the day what that looks like. But, but I'm a little bit more optimistic, maybe because there's going to be Christmas soon. And maybe it'll open its heart, and maybe my colleague will not call people radicals and maybe just advocates at that point. But, but I, but I do want to thank you for the work that you've done this last couple of years. I think you've tried to kind of herd cats, and as we called it at City Hall, make the sausage is very difficult. But I think we have an opportunity to do something good for our community for the next couple of decades. And I hope we don't miss that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
I just got one question. Does any of the supervisors actually like what's on the table? No, like the whole package?
Well, I, usually when I go to a restaurant, I don't like to go buffet. I'd like to pick my own. So there's some things that I like, some things that I don't like. But, but I think, I do think we have an opportunity to try to get to a place. I hope we can, from, from all the folks that are at the table.
And I'm, I'm going to be with, with Luis. Obviously, as the county, we don't like the package. But I fully understand why, why all of the mayors are in support.
No, they're not.
Because, or the majority, okay, let me rephrase. The majority are in support because they're getting the double of their existing allocation. And when we go into the cities, especially the small rural cities, roads is a top priority, like it is for us. And in all of these numbers, other than for the county, the city of Clovis, and a little bit in Fresno, all the other cities are doubling their current allocation. So from their point of view, I fully understand their position because they're getting double of what they're currently getting. But the issue is, is where does it come from? Well, it's, obviously, it's got to come from somewhere. So it's, it's the regional aspect, that it's the connectivity, and that, that's where it's coming from.
I think, Brian, though, there may be, it may be a little misleading because they're, they're getting more over a 30-year proposal versus the 20-year proposal that was the prior Measure C. This is a 30-year proposal, so it looks like they're getting a whole lot more. Well, if you extend it out 40 years, they're going to get even more. So that's, that's a bit misleading. But in the bottom line is, the county is not getting the same what it got in the prior proposal.
Right.
So the county's.
Got it. And then again, for me, I personally think the only one who didn't go up and didn't go down is the airport. And I think every one of us in the county uses the airport. I think the airport should have got a bigger allocation. We all want a easier access. We want more flights. We want it more convenient. And yet they're the only one that stayed exact where they are. They had 1% in the current. They're getting 1% going forward, where everybody else is either going to get more or less. I personally thought for the regional connectivity, the airport should have got a little more. But again, there's five of us here. We all have our own five opinions. But I, I'm with Luis. I think there's still time to fix it, to maybe work it out a little bit. Or we're going to get nothing. All of us, we're going to get nothing. And then when we get nothing, then the people are the ones who really are going to lose when we have potholes in our cities and on our roads to get to the cities. Because then it's a lose-lose, and I don't want to see a lose-lose.
Can we commit at least to keeping the conversation going? And see if we can get to a place before we come up to all those deadlines?
No conversation.
That, that's exactly the problem. And I think we need to open that space for folks to have a discussion, further discussions.
Go ahead.
Just a quick comment from my standpoint. So the, the regional projects being eviscerated is a fatal flaw in this current proposal. You can't reduce regional projects from 36% down to 5 when we have so many different corridors that need investment. My district, I look at Millerton Road, which it's going to be somewhere between $30 to $40 million to expand roughly a four-mile section. And that's one of literally 30 different projects that we all have in our respective districts that benefit everyone. Cities, and it benefits the county, too. So, and, and Brian, to your point, you're right. I mean, this would really hurt the county if Measure C goes away. $10 million bucks? We don't have an extra $10 million in discretionary revenue. But I think where the conversation can continue, I significantly need to see regional projects come up. And to Mr. Phipps's point about how he indicated that transit really hasn't gone up a whole lot. When you factor in the transportation innovation piece, which technically is for transit, too, whether it's an 11% increase they're getting or a 5% increase in increase, they've got a significant increase there. But I think it can't be at the expense of our regional projects. They are so critical, so critical for us here at the county. So for me, I need to see significant movement in that area.
Thank you. This is informational only, and we'll just leave it at that and go to the next agenda item. Thank you. No, this is informational. I had the experts talk. Next item.
As mentioned this morning, item 11 was deleted. We now move to 11.1. Conduct a public hearing in accordance with California Government Code Section.
Go ahead, Victor, you can be first.
Hang on, we got a public comment.
Okay.
Good morning, honorable supervisors. My name is Victor Martinez. You guys all know me. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the mayor for the city of Mendota, vice chairman for Fresno Council of Governments, also sit on FCTA and LAFCO. And I'm here in support of the current plan that we are developing for Measure C. I know there's a lot of feelings in it. But there's some facts out there that I want to mention. And the facts are that for the past 20 years, our cities, especially the cities over there in the West Side, they've been falling behind and behind. And the fact that proves that is that our PCI, our pavement condition index, Mendota is the second worst in the county. You know, San Joaquin has the first worst roads in the county. Huron, I think, the third. Then you have Orange Cove and Faribault and so on. With this plan that we are working on right now, we are setting the base from $100,000 minimum to $400,000 minimum so that we can fix the roads. All of us know how much it takes to fix a road. To go from one quarter section, it's quarter million dollars. Now think about, in the past 20 years, we received only $5 million. How do we expect to fix the roads? While we are building the nice big exchanges, nice regional projects, but nobody thought about the cities falling behind. And it's not only the rural cities, but also the cities of Fresno. You guys serve the city of Fresno. What is it, a billion dollars in deferred maintenance behind? So now it's time to bring the measure, bring the cities back up and fill that hole, help us catch up. You know, we live in the United States of America, the richest country in the world, but we have third world countries' roads. That's just a fact. You know, a couple of other things that I want to mention. I don't know if I'm, I got 50 more seconds here. 180 West, I remember perfectly that conversation because I was one of the ones spearheading that, that conversation. You know, to me, it just seems that we put money away with the hopes that someday to build that 180 all the way to I-5, which never happened. And all of us knew that didn't happen. Mike Leonardo knew it wasn't going to happen. But they never mentioned, not a single time, this is not going to happen, let's do something else. Now, do they wanted us to continue saving money there on doing nothing or act on something? What other choices do we have? Right, then we had the 33 from Mendota to Faribault, and maybe doing another passing lanes? So it's about acting. It's about doing something and avoiding those situations that look like a shell game in the budget to our citizens. When you promise something and it doesn't happen, it doesn't look right.
Okay, thank you, Victor.
Good morning. Mayor Beltran, City of Parlier. I've been the mayor for 11 years now, and I'm also the chair for Fresno Council of Government, also FCTA. And I also sit on the FCTA. What my concern is, you mentioned, Buddy, or someone mentioned that, why weren't there, the county not involved in this process after that? You specifically sent out an email stating that you did not want to be in that conversation.
That's not what the facilitation committee was.
That you did not want to be part of it. We continued as we were scheduled to continue to try to work through this process. This is all we're trying to do, is focus on our communities to try to get to a measure that everyone can support. Now, as far as regional, I keep hearing regional, regional, regional. We go to the Fresno, the Valley Voice, when we go to the Valley Voice, what do we advocate for? Matching funds. Matching funds for that regional project. Is there any regional projects right now identified? There is not. So the money would sit there. And that would be great if you had a project. But if you don't have anything identified, so it's just going to sit there for, what happened with 180 sat there for years. Nobody used those funds. That's why we had to now reallocate those funds years later to other projects on the West Side. So to me, it's that we need to figure out how we can come together instead of arguing, and how we can support one measure. Having two measures out there is not going to help. It will not, both will fail. Both will fail because you're going to have a divided community that will just say, I'm not supporting either one because I don't even know which one's the right one to support. So the other thing is that I do have a letter here from Mayor Vosberg from Colinga that is also behind this measure. And just to try to, I'm sorry?
Y'all have.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure. So these are your constituents. And by calling us radicals, that's not right. We are your constituents, Buddy, especially you. You represent Parlier. Why would anyone say that this is a shit show and that we are radicals when we're just trying to do what's right, to bring unity, and to finally focus on what the rural communities can receive? Because we've been left behind for many, many years. When I first got elected, all the mayors complained about that. I would hear it every time at the COG. We're finally doing something about it and bringing everybody together and support a measure instead of just certain groups. Back then, on '22, I didn't really know what was in the measure. And we had to just approve it, not knowing what. I knew what was, Parlier was going to receive, but I didn't know what the entire measure was about. So I just really recommend that instead of fighting and arguing, that we support a measure that we can all agree with and put one measure on the ballot. Thank you.
But, Chairman, I want to clarify. Mayor, I'm not calling you a radical. I'm calling transportation for all the radical group that you allowed to hijack the steering committee, a bunch of radicals. Not calling you.
Okay, good. We're, go ahead.
Hi. Good morning to all of you. I'm Kay Burton with the League of Women Voters of Fresno. The League has supported Measure C since its inception in 1986. We've been part of the development of those. Sorry. We've been part of the development of those measures. We've been part of the oversight committees. We've been part of everything. And we've also done our share of promotion to get those measures passed. I am currently one of the radicals on the steering committee, and I'm proud to be on that steering committee, where there has been broad public, broad participation support, not just for transportation for all. But there was a 93% vote of a 30-member committee to support the allocations that you see before you. And I want to back up to something. The implementation guidelines are nowhere near finished. We have started on them. There are a lot of discussions going on about every single feature of those. They are not a completed document. So don't believe that that is the case. We haven't even begun to discuss much of the, much of the guidelines. Okay, beyond that, the 25% allocation to public transit that's been called terribly radical, we're radical supporting public transit that nobody uses. I want you to know that the allocations that we have voted on and approved represent what we have heard from the community, from thousands of members of the community that we have talked to personally, that have filled out surveys. They're part of the regional transit surveys that went out by COG. People want, in a 30-year plan, we're talking about 2057, they would like to see a community that is not without options to the individual vehicle. We would like to look like other communities in the state, other large cities, that have devoted money, time, resources, planning to having a really robust public transit system. We've increased the allocation by a very small percentage. The two optional plans that you've looked at, provided by the transportation experts, you're calling those, and the hybrid plan that your own staff presented, would cut public transit in half, in half. What we heard from the community, from your constituents, was that the current public transit system is not adequate. So the ridership, of course, is not what one would imagine to exist in a fully built-out system.
Okay, thank you very much.
And I want you to think about the future for a change and not back, putting us back to roads only. Thank you.
Okay, well.
As men, as mentioned earlier, item 11 was deleted from the agenda. We now move to 11.1. Under General Services, conduct a public hearing in accordance with California Government Code Section 4217.12, that the terms of the Master Fuel Cell Power Purchase Agreement and each system order, order agreement with Bloom Development Incorporated are in the best interest of the county. Also finding that the anticipated cost to the county for electrical energy or conservation services to be provided by the solid oxide fuel cell systems will be less than the county's anticipated marginal costs for the purchase of such energy and conservation services. Adopt and authorize the chairman to execute resolution making such determination and findings. Under Missionary Policy Number 34, from competitive bids or requests for proposals determined that an exception to the competitive bidding requirement under AP 34 is satisfied and a suspension of competition is warranted due to unusual or extraordinary circumstances. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute the Master Fuel Cell Power Purchase Agreement and two system order agreements for the Fresno County Sheriff's Office Jail and Plaza Building respectively. Authorize Director of General Services for their designee to approve and execute all interconnection applications and agreements required by local utility company and any contract change orders and other documentations as stated in the agenda item, subject to approval by county council as to legal form and order controller tax collector as to accounting form.
And I just need to state for the record. So I have a financial interest in this, so I'm going to abstain. And for the record, I have not been involved in any of the negotiations for this. So I'm just going to leave the room now.
Go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Raymond Hunter, Director of General Services. In partnership with County Administrative Office, County Council, and Public Works, General Services presenting an energy project that will install 2,655 kilowatts fuel cell system at the county plaza building and the sheriff office jail. This project is expected to save the county approximately $19,000, I'm sorry, $19,000 million over a 20-year period, advancing the county's commitment to clean energy generation. Joining me today is Solwyn Simons from Bloom Development to provide more information on the benefits of the proposed fuel cell. Staff will also be available if there are any questions. California Government Code 4217.12 allows your board to approve energy service contracts at a public hearing when it is determined that the agreements are in the public's best interest and will reduce energy costs compared to traditional sources.
Solwyn, you want to go ahead? Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Thank you for inviting us to speak today. Thank you for inviting us to speak today. We will go through a brief executive summary of the project, and we welcome questions at the conclusion. So, as Raymond pointed out, this is a 2,665 KW onsite fuel cell project. This involves installation at the Plaza Tulare, and also the Fresno County Sheriff's Office Jail facility as well. Across those two facilities, at the Plaza, it's a 455 KW installation, and at the jail, it's a approximately 2.2 megawatt installation there. The key advantages for the county are highlighted here. The first is taking control of energy cost throughout the duration of the project. As you all have experienced relative to PG&E, the cost varies significantly year over year and continue to grow at an average compound annual growth rate of over 6.5%. With the Bloom PPA, which is full turnkey, it's fully installed by Bloom, we handle all operations and maintenance, our costs are fixed over the full 20-year period, so there's no surprises in terms of what your cost of electricity looks like over that full period. The other thing that's pretty powerful, no pun intended, about the project, is that it drops your CO2 emissions by approximately 18.3% relative to grid purchased electricity from PG&E. And then finally, this platform is really an investment in the energy transition, because fundamentally, this is a hydrogen fuel cell technology. It's proven, Bloom's been in business, and I'll show a slide here momentarily, been in business for 24 years, and we've been shipping systems for the last 14 years. So, by investing in this approach, you're insured that as the hydrogen economy evolves, you'll be able to take advantage of that without any change to the technology that's being installed. A little bit of background on Bloom Energy. As I mentioned, we've been around for 24 years. Our 2024 revenue was just shy of a billion and a half dollars. We have a global footprint. We're based here in California, but we have operations in Asia as well as in Europe. In Europe, we're very proud to power the Ferrari plant in Italy, where they obviously manufacture cars. But again, all of that power is coming from Bloom Energy, Bloom Energy servers. We have over a gigawatt and a half of these systems deployed. That number is scaling very rapidly as well, mostly driven by our business in the data center space, because of our ability to provide high reliability, as well as fixed and typically lower cost. Whoops. Not sure what happened. Oh, there we go. So, just a quick, this is just a quick snapshot of our, our sites rather, in the state of California. We cover every major vertical, everything from telecommunications companies to high-tech manufacturing, to companies like Kellogg, as an example, utilize our systems. We're also the largest distributed energy provider for Walmart, for Home Depot, for IKEA stores, and the like, all due to the fact that we have high reliability, lower cost, and a much more powerful sustainability profile for the production of power. Go to the next slide here. So, key advantages, just to briefly summarize here, our resiliency first and foremost. The critical loads at the Plaza Tulare, as well as at the FCSO jail, will be able to operate during grid outages without any interruption, because this is a microgrid configuration of the energy servers. Reduction in cost, as we mentioned, this is fully maintained and operated by Bloom Energy, so in terms of the diesel backup infrastructure that you have at both those facilities, much of that is going to be significantly reduced in terms of the maintenance, fuel, and the like. Reliability, we operate 24/7/365. We can offer multiple nines of uptime, and the reason for that fundamentally, from an architecture standpoint, is that we have built-in redundancy across our energy server architecture, and as a result, even during maintenance operations, we never take the systems offline, so therefore, they're operating 24/7 to deliver that uptime that we're citing here. Key point, in terms of how, and I have a slide to show this technically in more detail, we produce zero particulate emissions, so the smog-causing emissions that you get from operating diesel generators or gas-fired power plants and the like are zero relative to Bloom. We produce zero oxides of nitrogen or sulfur, and as a result, we're exempt from air permitting requirements. And then, as I also mentioned previously, we handle 100% of the energy server maintenance operation, as well as the installation, as well as installation permitting and the like, all the way leading up to commissioning of the system. In terms of why we say this is a future-proof power generation platform, it's really based on the core hydrogen fuel cell technology that you see displayed on the screen now. At its heart is the fuel cell. It's made up of three components. In the center, we have an electrolytic material that also provides mechanical stability. On the top layer, we have an ink that is actually printed on, that operates as an anode. On the bottom layer, we have another ink that's proprietary, that's, that operates as a cathode. I should point out that Bloom has over 300 patents that protect every aspect of our technology, and that number continues to grow. So, the way this works in practice electrochemically is that we bring in natural gas. Again, this is zero combustion, so we reform the gas to get the hydrogen molecule out of the CH4 molecule, which is natural gas. We react the hydrogen molecules with the anode layer, and we react ambient air with the cathode layer. The byproduct of that electrochemical reaction is really threefold. We bring electrons off, that's where your power comes from. We also release hot, water in the form of high-temperature steam, and then we also release some CO2 into the atmosphere. Again, that CO2 is actually less than the CO2 that is produced as a byproduct of buying or byproduct of electricity generated and distributed on the grid. In terms of driving reliability and modularity, we take these individual fuel cells, and we build stacks. We turn the stacks into power modules. We take the power modules, each one of which produces 65 KW of power. We integrate those into energy server modules, which are operating at three, or produce 325 KW each, and then from those, because they're modular and redundant, we are able to connect those together and build out energy server farms that can be, you know, anywhere from the sizes that we talked about today for Fresno County, all the way up to hundreds of megawatts and indeed gigawatt scale projects. Finally, I'd like to close on the sustainability benefits that we've been highlighting. We've actually run the calculations specifically for Fresno County and the two installation sites, again, at the Plaza and at the Fresno County Office of the Sheriff Jail as well. For the 2,665 KW system portfolio, you're reducing your CO2 emissions by over 1,800 metric tons per year. That's an 18.3% reduction. As I mentioned, we produce zero oxides of nitrogen and sulfur, and so that translates to, on the nitrogen side, 14,272 pounds of NOx, of nitrogen dioxide that's taken out of the air, so those are smog-causing particles, again, taken out 100%. And then, in terms of sulfur dioxide, we reduce that by just shy of 1,000 pounds per year. Final point is, is that from a, from a sustainability perspective, we also, as I mentioned, when I went through the electrochemical reaction, we produce water as a byproduct of that reaction, and so as a result, we're saving over 257 million gallons of water annually as compared to electricity that would be normally purchased from the grid. So, all in all, it's a winning project for the county in terms of the economic advantages of saving over $19 million across the 20-year PPA term. It's also a resiliency win for the county in terms of providing resiliency across the facilities without the need or minimizing the need for diesel generators. And then finally, the sustainability benefits are palpable, given the scale of reductions in CO2, oxides of nitrogen and sulfur, and water conservation as well. And that will conclude my remarks.
Okay. I got a quick question for Mr. Hunter. The chillers that are over there, will they run off this system, or are they on a separate system altogether? It's a complete separate system. Okay, just asking. Because it takes a lot of hor, how much horsepower does it take to actually run them? Oh, yeah, just let me know. Okay. Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Go ahead. Got one public comment.
Step over here. Is this something you guys are maybe considering? Then I could ask my question.
Yep.
Okay, I like to maybe ask questions about the, what is the initial cost of it and the equipment, like the decomposition, like how it breaks down, and because you say you do your own maintenance or whatever, so maybe like, look at that, or how it's been looked at in the past, or how it goes. But, yeah, basically, the high startup cost, and I don't know, like, it sounds good that they're saying we're going to save money, but I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question. So, a couple things. We can go back in terms of what the equipment looks like, just to give you all a visual. We'll go back to the first slide. So, what you're looking at on the screen are our energy servers. This is what the equipment looks like. These systems are deployed at Apple's campus. As I mentioned, they're at, you know, at Home Depots and the like. The reason is because of the aesthetics. It's a very clean design, and they're super quiet. The noise emission is less than 64 dB within 10 feet of the system, so we can literally have conversations just like this, standing next to it, so it's not like a generator where you hear big rotating pieces of forged metal. There are no moving parts inside the system, except for the blowers. That's where you do hear some noise, but again, it's, it's de minimis. Again, you're able to stand next to it and sort of hear like, almost like an air conditioner operating. In terms of the cost, another great question, where the savings comes from. This is a PPA agreement, a power purchase agreement with the county, which means that the cost per KWH is what the county pays for only as a result of the production of that power. So, as a result of that, and that model of the PPA, there's no out-of-pocket or upfront capital expenditure for the county to proceed with this project.
Thank you, thank you. So, I guess that's it for public comment.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, Suazzer Manc says that he was abstaining, but he was actually recusing himself from this item.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
We now move to item 12, under Public Works and Planning. Consider an approved petition for partial cancellation of Agriculture Land Conservation Contract Number 8262 filed by Craig and Michelle Sworson to remove a 2.02 acre portion of a 30.03 acre parcel from Williamson Act contract to allow creation of a 2.02 acre homesite exception parcel for residential use.
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, staff was able to make the required findings and recommends adoption. Nothing further to add?
No, I don't, this is pretty, pretty simple deal, so.
Homesite for a relative who's going to be assisting in the operation of the agricultural.
Yeah. I'll call for public comment. Does the applicant want to comment? You don't have to. Go ahead. You're all right? Good. Okay, all right. Good choice. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay. It's in my district, I'll make a motion.
Second.
For A, B, do I have to do it separately, separately? Or, or do I have to do it for A, B, and C?
I believe you can make one motion.
Okay, I'll take them all together.
I'll second them all together.
Okay. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 13. Consider an approved petition for partial cancellation of Agriculture Land Conservation Contract Number 2809 filed by Rolando Ramirez on behalf of Colin Kowano to remove a 1.27 acre portion of a 39.38 acre parcel from Williamson Act contract to allow 1.27 acres to be created as a separate parcel for residential use.
This item is associated with the matter before your Board on November 18th, which is a variance to create this parcel. This simply effectuates that through this cancellation. That item was approved by your Board.
All right, I'll ask for public comment. Is there any public comment on this item? Hearing none, I'll bring it back to the Board. I believe this is in my district, too.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
For A and B.
Second for A and B.
Is that? Yep. Everything, yeah. Thank you. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 14, under Public Works and Planning. Adopt Fourth Amendment to extend the interim ordinance pursuant to Government Code, Section 25123D and 25131, authorizing occupation of temporary housing by individuals displaced as a result of Creek Fire disaster from December 31st, 2025 to December 31st, 2026.
Nothing further to add? This item just extends it one more year?
Okay, any, go ahead.
Yeah, I reached out to Public Works, I don't know, a little over a month ago, about this particular item. This, we have an ordinance in place right now that allows people to live in trailers on their properties while they're rebuilding their homes. I know initially, when we brought this forward five years ago, we wanted it to sunset at the end of five years, but I've heard from a few constituents that are still working on getting back into their homes, so I think an extra year would be greatly appreciated by them, so I appreciate Public Works bringing this forward, and I would move for approval when appropriate.
Okay. Any, anybody want to, any public comment on this? Item 14, hearing none?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now move to item number 15. Social Services, receive and discuss the Fresno County Mod C Quarterly Governing Body Report and Updates for the period of June 14, 2024 to September 13, 2025.
Good morning, Board. Sonia Bugue, Department of Social Services. I will be very brief. So, we're required to quarterly bring to your Board updates from our operation of shelter. We report on few different issues. We do not have any new policies and procedures for the past quarter. We have had 43 contacts with law enforcement, that's what's reported to licensing, majority of them AWALS. We've had 38 youth enter our shelter, and we had two instances of overstays over nine days, and we had, the budget is also attached to it, and we had no administrative actions against our agency or staff and employees. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Any questions?
The property that was damaged, there were two incidences. What kind of damage are we talking about?
Our walls, and.
Okay. It's like holes in walls, and then as far as our staff, none of them were assaulted? So, okay, very good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this?
This is just receive of report.
Okay. This is just talk.
We now, we now move.
Do we need a vote?
No vote. No vote.
We now move to item 16. Board of Suazzer Committee reports and comments.
Nope. Go.
I got a report out. I serve on the National Association of Counties Board of Directors, and then we had our Fall Conference in Wise County, Texas, last week, and at that particular conference, we set 10 different priorities for NACO moving forward, and the next meeting that we're going to be having collectively is going to be at the Ledge Conference in February in Washington, DC. But, was a great event, and there were about 60 of the Board of Directors there out of the 130. Some joined online, but I'm glad that I live in Clovis, California, Wise County, Texas, beautiful place to visit, but for me, I like my home here. Also had an opportunity to participate in the Clovis Children's Electric Parade on Saturday. That's a tradition that the Kiwanis Club has been carrying forward for many, many decades, and it was a fun event. It had a, I don't know if it was a record-breaking crowd, but it's the biggest crowd I've seen since COVID. Just thousands of people came out for it, so that was wonderful. This coming Sunday is the 100th Anniversary Trek to the Tree, and for those of you who have not had an opportunity to go out and see the nation's Christmas tree, it's in Fresno County, it's in my district, it's a general grant tree, also known as the nation's Christmas tree, too. The event will begin Sunday, December 14th, at 2:30 PM. Be there or be square, but it will, it'll be a special time. This Board passed a resolution about a month and a half ago, recognizing the significance of the tree and the fact that this 100-year anniversary is Sunday, and so I will be presenting that at that event. This is Buddy's final full Board Day as Chairman, and I just want to say thank you to Buddy.
And I just want to say thank you to Buddy. I appreciate his no-nonsense approach to things, his tender heart, and his love for Fresno County. So Buddy, I love you.
Thank you. I think Sonia once called me a loaf of bread. French bread. I'm crusty on the outside but soft on the inside. Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Director Steve White and our Public Works Department for the swift action in addressing many issues in our district, whether it's cutting down fallen trees or fixing infrastructure. Our office appreciates their timely response to our constituents' concern. So thank you, Director Steve White and your team of professionals for your effort, and look forward to working with everyone next year.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Nothing. Two things real quick. I got re-elected on the Executive Committee through the Urban Caucus.
Outstanding.
Yeah. And for CSAC. And, you know, I kind of hate to rehash things we hashed here, but when they said the implementation guidelines are nowhere near to be done yet, that's the whole key to this thing. The numbers can actually be meaningless if the implementation guidelines are, you know, so out of whack that they make the numbers. Nobody can actually use stuff. Okay. With that, I'll go to board appointments.
Item 17, board appointments.
Two.
To the District 5 Board—District 5 Board Appointments, I have the Aubrey Volunteer Fire and Emergency Services Citizens Advisory Committee to appoint Philip Kenmeyer to the District 5 seat previously held by Toby Long, which expired on 4/1 of 21, and to the West Fresno County Red Scale Protective District, reappoint Kevin Seaburns to the at-large seat, which expired on 7/29/21.
Gary, you have any? You have any? Is there any public comment on those two? Hearing none, I'll—you want to make a motion?
I'll move for approval of the appointments.
Okay. Second. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
We now take up item 18, public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda. We are as well taking up public comment for items 19 through 30. Members of the public, if you are addressing the board with regards to closed-session items from 19 through 30, I just request that you please specify which item you're speaking.
Okay, with that. You snooze, you lose.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Nathan Ollie. I'm Director of Government Affairs for Comcast for the Central Valley. And like you, Supervisor Magzik, I'm happy to live in Clovis as well. Just want to put that out there. I'm excited to let the board know that the California Public Utilities Commission has issued its final draft proposal for the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment, or BEED program. As you may remember, this is $1.5 billion of federal funding administered by the state to help improve broadband access across California. I'm happy to tell you that pending approval by the CPUC and the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, Comcast has been awarded $91.3 million in grant funds to connect nearly 12,000 locations in Fresno County. In addition to that $91.3 million in subsidy funds, Comcast will contribute over $70 million in matching funds to complete the project in Fresno County. So these are all locations and portions of the county on the valley floor, and each supervisory district, easy for me to say, will see locations connected. We'll work with your staff and the county staff and consultants to provide some more detailed information in the coming months. We'll try to get on the agenda and show you some maps. This is an especially important award because the county's one of five across the region, Merced, Madera, Tulare, and Kings, the others, that partnered with Comcast on these BEED applications. The county is committed to in-kind resources such as expedited permitting and staff and consultant support, allowing us to work together without cash contribution on the county's part. These partnerships are the first of their kind for Comcast in California, and as a result, the CPUC awarded every dollar that the company applied for in these five counties. Other providers have been awarded funds as well in areas that don't overlap with us, which will help us connect more residents and businesses. This would not be possible without the support of county staff, the CAO's office, Ed Hill and his team at the county IT department, as well as the county's consultants, Tone Consulting Group. Their team is back there. Thank you to them for your vision and allowing them to come up with creative solutions to help us connect as many residents as possible. This is on the heels of projects that Comcast self-funded in Biola and Carruthers and another grant-funded project that's underway in Riverdale. So the next step in the process is the commission will vote on this recommendation December the 18th, and then it'll go to the federal government with approval expected from them after the first of the year. We'll keep you posted on when we start construction, which will be sometime next year. And want to thank you again for all your vision and support as we work to help bridge the digital divide in the county. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Buenas tardes. Quisiera no sé si hay la facilidad de algún intérprete en esta tarde?
You had an interpreter, clerk? If not, I can just—habla en español y yo traduzco el mensaje.
Okay, está muy bien. Buenas tardes. En esta tarde venimos, somos la asociación de taqueros de Fresno, y venimos a pedir este una vez más ayuda porque nosotros somos los que estamos operando. Voy a ser claro. Anteriormente, el condado de Fresno nos obligó a comprar unas trailas para poder trabajar con todos los permisos.
The gentleman's the representative for the Food Vendor Association, and he referenced previously—I think he was part of the Confia program, supervisor Pacheco, where they purchased trailers and equipment to sell their food products.
Muchos de nosotros tuvimos que hacer un esfuerzo para conseguir dinero porque el valor de una tráiler es de 40 mil dólares para arriba.
And during that course, they obviously had to secure funding to upwards of $40,000 to $50,000.
Y hasta ahorita muchos estamos pagando esa cantidad de dinero, pero hubo un problema que cuando nosotros compramos esas trailas, el condado paró de hacer inspecciones por la noche para personas que no están trabajando con sus permisos para poder trabajar, vender comida.
So after they got all of their trailer equipment in order within the legal parameters, the county stopped doing inspections on people that were operating without permits.
Y hemos sido nosotros con el condado, hemos tenido juntas, y lo que ellos nos han dicho es que no tienen suficiente dinero, no tienen personal para trabajar en esa área. Entonces, es una de las razones que estamos nosotros aquí buscando. Sabemos cuál es el problema, pero queremos saber cuál va a ser la solución para parar esa gente que no está operando con sus permisos, que no está pagando sus taxes, y nosotros estamos siendo tremendamente afectados. Muchos de mis compañeros han parado y ya no están trabajando.
So in speaking with the county, the challenge that they're running into is that our folks don't work in the evenings and nights to go and inspect people that are selling without permits, and it puts them at a disadvantage because they've complied and gone through the process. And so they're here to flag that problem for us and get some help and support.
Entonces, como le dije, muchos de mis compañeros han tomado a hacer lo mismo, vender sus trailas y operar sin permisos porque no podemos competir con ellos por la razón de que nosotros estamos pagando impuestos, todo lo que se necesita. Entonces, por eso venimos en esta tarde a pedir cuál sería la solución para este problema.
Which is now causing folks that were previously legally complying with to sell their equipment because they're not seeing any enforcement on folks that should be in compliance. So they're here today to ask for some help and support. And I'll have something to say because I'm going to invite them to an event that we're having already.
Queríamos también hablar de la desigualdad que hay respecto a las multas. Por ejemplo, a una food truck, una multa, como ya estás con todos tus permisos y todos vienen por—tus multas son de 500 a 1,000 dólares. Y para las personas que no están con—sin permisos, les están autorizando ir a hablar con ellos durante tres, cuatro veces, y las multas son de 100 dólares. So la ley no está siendo equitativa con unos ni con otros.
So you want some more equitable fine structure for people that are not operating without compliance, and for them that they are, you know, purchased equipment and went through the process. They want to make sure that everybody's getting the same treatment, and folks are not just getting away with stuff.
Son más de 500 trailas aquí en Fresno. Estamos pidiendo ayuda, por favor. Si nos pueden ayudar, les agradecemos mucho su tiempo. Sabemos que están sin desayunar aquí. Les agradecemos mucho.
No traen tacos por casualidad?
Sí, sí quisiéramos. Si nos pueden apoyar, los vamos a mandar correos referente. Somos más de 134 ya personas que estamos juntos y estamos queriendo hacer algo, o sea, porque ya no—se está haciendo cada vez más insostenible. No puedes competir con eso. Es una desigualdad.
Yeah, they just want equal treatment for all the folks. They've complied with the permits. It's an association of about 150 with food vendors, and they just want everybody to play on the same field on there.
Tell them that—he won't get any argument from this.
Yeah. No, estamos de acuerdo, y también quiero aprovechar esta oportunidad. Estamos trabajando ahorita en un proceso para exactamente lo que mencionan, codificar y tener un proceso más fácil para que las personas puedan seguir, porque vamos—the siguiente fase va a ser de darle la multa a esas personas que no están con sus permisos o con todo el reglamento y todo eso. Entonces, vamos a tener un evento. Mi personal ahorita le va a dar la fecha para coordinar, y yo voy a tener una junta con ustedes también para platicar un poco más de ese proceso.
Buenos días, buenas tardes. Okay. Mire, yo soy dueño de restaurante hace 15, 17 años, y también he estado teniendo el mismo problema. Se me ponen a un lado, se me ponen enfrente a gente que tiene—pues, no pagan impuestos, no pagan ningún tipo de nada, y pues a mí se me hace muy injusto. Tengo—hablando desde hace como tres años con el al condado, a la ciudad, y tampoco hace nada.
This gentleman's a restaurant owner, and he says that he's having an issue with folks that are just posting up right outside his establishment. They're not licensed, they're not paying taxes, and it's very unfair to him to do that.
Sí, y a uno pues este—siempre están pues—
¿En dónde está su restaurante?
Sí, yo soy de Arsenio's Mexican Food.
Arsenio's Mexican Food. He's got a couple establishments. ¿Está en la ciudad de Condado o en la ciudad no más?
Fresno, sí.
En todo—
Yo este—somos varios dueños de negocios. Tenemos como 15, 16 restaurantes, y también pienso que pues es muy injusto porque todos a—bueno.
He wants to—he wants to establish a process that's fair to all the restaurants. About 15 or 16, they're both in rural and urban communities. Sí, si se lo puede dar a la clerk, y ya no lo da a nosotros. Entonces, igualmente, este evento que estamos trabajando para codificar y legalizar todo ese proceso, los vamos a ayudar. Mi personal ahorita va a agarrar su información, y yo voy a llamarle personalmente para agarrar más información de usted.
Sí, yo ya había puesto varias quejas con usted. Ya hablé también, y nos—pues pienso que no están haciendo nada.
Tiene que darme el lugar de donde está y para poder responder. ¿Con quién habló anteriormente?
Ya hace—bueno, hace como un año sí hablé con alguien, pero—
Okay, yo no estaba aquí antes. Este es mi primer año que estoy aquí, pero yo lo voy a ayudar. Yo soy el representante Luis Chávez. Yo me encargo de mi área, y yo lo voy a hablar.
Okay, muchas gracias.
¿Sale? Ándale, pues. Gracias.
We should take public comment on closed session, too, if any. Oh, we did that? Okay. Right. So do not expect any report outs after closed session, so we may adjourn from closed session.
You may entertain a motion to adjourn following closed session.
Take a motion?
Second. All in favor, somebody saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.